Welcome. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Carson City Board of Supervisors. Today's October 1st, 2020. It is 8:30 a.m. We are in the community room at 851 East Williams Street. And I'll start the meeting off by reading a disclosure or a notice. The public may provide public comment in advance of a meeting by written submission to the following email address, publiccomment@carson.org. For inclusion or reference in the minutes of the meeting, your public comment must include your full name and be submitted via email, not later than 3:00 p.m. the day before the meeting. Members of the public who wish to provide live public comment may do so during the designated public comment periods indicated on the agenda via telephonic appearance by dialing eight, excuse me, 408-418-9388. Please do not join by phone if you do not wish to make public comment. And we will be taking public comment, rather than taking public comment during each specific item on the agenda, we will be taking it at the beginning of the meeting and then again at the end of the meeting. So if you do have public comment, you will have two opportunities to provide that public comment, but we will not be taking public comment during each item. With that, we now have a roll call tomorrow, please.
Supervisor Giame.
Here.
Supervisor Bagwell.
Here.
Supervisor Barrett.
Here.
Acting Mayor Bonkowski.
Here.
Quorum's present.
Can we take care of the echo, the feedback? Okay, thank you. All right. At this time, I'd like to invite Ken Haskins up from the First Christian Church.
We need it in our nation right now. We get through so much with pandemic and the hurricanes, the wildfires, and the acts of violence and heated political campaigns. It just seems like there's no end to it. Yet we know that this is a harbinger of better things and better days, and these will not last forever. I pray for our Board of Supervisors here that you would grant them wisdom to make good decisions on behalf of all who live here at Carson City and call, proudly call Carson City home, so that our days will be better and brighter ahead. Pray in Jesus' name.
Thank you, Ken. Would you also lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ken. At this time, we're now on Agenda Item Number 5, our first public comment. Desi, is there anybody on the line for public comment at this time?
We have a caller this morning. Caller, when you hear the beeps, it is your turn for public comment. Please state your name for the record. Caller, please state your name for the record. Acting Mayor Bonkowski, that's the end of public comment.
Thank you. Go ahead, Lori.
So I just wanted to announce that we're all wearing purple today to acknowledge National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Just thought I'd bring that up. And for anyone that's interested, the new Carson City official street map is available at the Chamber of Commerce or at any of the advertisers in the map. So I won't read out all their names because there's a lot of wonderful businesses, but the new map, 10 years, is out.
Thank you, Lori. All right. If there's no more public comment, then we will move on to Agenda Item 6, Approval of the Minute. Have you all had a chance to read the minutes? If so, I'll entertain a motion.
So I would like first for the Secretary to please read into the record a clarification being added into the minutes, just so everyone is aware.
Yes, Supervisor. The change was to Item 20C, and the addition was a clarification, actually, which states adding a candidate name to the general election ballot is not possible at this time due to the timing of the clerk recorder, due to timing as the clerk recorder, through separate statute, is required to submit her final list of candidates at a certain time.
I'll make the motion if you want. I move to approve the minutes of September 3, 2020, with previously submitted typographical errors and the note by Ms. Warren on the record.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The vote is 4-0 to approve the minutes with the noted corrections. We are now on Agenda Item 7 for possible adoption of the agenda. City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
No changes, but I just wanted to add that we did receive public comment through email, and that has been provided to the board, and it's also on our website and will be part of the record for today's meeting.
Each member of the board has received that public comment, and I have verified that everybody has read it all. So anybody that submitted public comment, please be aware that we have seen it and read it. We're now on Agenda Item Number 8, 8A, a proclamation to recognize the week of October 4th through 10th, 2020, as Fire Prevention Week. I have a proclamation, which I will read into the record and then hand it over to our emergency responders. Good morning. Fire Prevention Week, October 4th through 10th, 2020. Whereas the city of Carson City, Nevada, is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Carson City, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed 2,630 people in the United States in 2017, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 357,000 home fires, and whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, where fire departments responded to more than 173,200 annually between 2013 and 2017, and whereas two of every five home fires start in the kitchen, with 31% of those fires resulting from unattended cooking, and whereas more than half of reported non-fatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fire themselves, and whereas children under five face a higher risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking than being burned in a cooking fire, whereas Carson City's residents should stay in the kitchen when frying food on the stove top, keep a three-foot kid-free zone around cooking areas, and keep anything that can catch fire away from stove tops, and whereas the 2020 Fire Prevention Week theme, Serve Up Fire Safety in the Kitchen, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Therefore, I, Brad Bonkowski, Mayor Pro Tem of Carson City, Nevada, on behalf of this Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim October 4th through 10th, 2020, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this community. I urge all the people of Carson City to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, check their kitchens for fire hazards, and use safe cooking practices, and support the many public safety activities and efforts of Carson City's Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2020. Gentlemen, you have a statement, too?
Sure. Dave Rubin for the record. Things are a little different this year for Fire Prevention Week, just like it is for everything else. Normally, we'd be out in the schools and hosting some public events. We're not going to be able to do that this year. We are working with the schools to give them some virtual activities that the school can send out, and some posters are going to be around in all the city buildings, and we'll do some social media stuff. So hopefully next year, we can get back to more in-person things. And remember, daylight saving change is coming up, I think, later this month. Remember to check your smoke detector batteries.
Thank you, Dave.
To remind me often.
We have a second proclamation this morning. It is also Walk to School Week, October 5th through the 9th, 2020. Good morning, ladies. Whereas the lives of hundreds of children could be saved each year if communities take steps to make pedestrian safety a priority, whereas a lack of physical activity plays a leading role in rising rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health problems among children, and being able to walk or bicycle to school offers an opportunity to build activity into daily routine, whereas driving students to school by private vehicle contributes to traffic congestion and air pollution, whereas an important role for parents and caregivers is to teach children about pedestrian safety and become aware of the difficulties and dangers that children face on their trip to school each day, and the health and environmental risk related to physical inactivity and air pollution, whereas community leaders and parents can determine the walkability of their community by using a walkability checklist, whereas community members and leaders should make a plan to make immediate changes to enable children to walk safely and bicycle in our communities, and develop a list of suggestions for improvements that can be done over time, whereas children, parents, and community leaders around the world are joining together to walk to school and evaluate walking and bicycling conditions in their communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Pro Tem Brad Bonkowski, proclaim October 5th through the 9th, 2020, Walk to School Week in Carson City, and encourage everyone to consider the safety and health of children today and every day. Ladies?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Western Nevada Safe for Us to School would love to invite Carson City to celebrate Walk to School Week all week, October 5th through the 9th. This year, individual families and schools can register for Walk to School Week at walkandbiketoschool.org. And we would encourage you to get outdoors, explore your neighborhood, and talk to your children about safe pedestrian behavior.
Thank you very much. All right. We are now on the consent agenda. I've had a request to pull Item 11A from the consent agenda. Is there, are there any other items that any members of the board or staff wish to be pulled from the consent agenda? I see none. So can we have a motion to approve Items 9 and 10, please?
I move to approve the Items 9 and 10 published on the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The consent agenda consisting of Items 9 and 10 is approved 4-0. We will now go to Item 11A, Possible Action. Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Amendment Number 1 to Contract 20300031, On Call Geographic Information System Services with Michael Baker International, to increase the contract amount by $75,001 for a total contract amount of $125,000 through June 30th, 2021, to be funded from the GIS Professional Services account. Good morning. Tell us about this contract.
Good morning. James Underwood, Chief Information Officer, for the record. So this contract helps us take care of our GIS system. We had, we obviously have an ongoing need for funding the work related to that. So we initially put in a contract for less than $50,000 to get us started for the year. With the COVID delays, we're coming back now and asking for an amount similar to past years. Would you like to add some to that, Matt?
Certainly. Matthew Lawton, Deputy Chief Information Officer, for the record. We've had an ongoing relationship with Michael Baker over the last four years, providing on-call GIS services for the city. They've done an excellent job for us. And the services they provide are outlined in the item, and I believe we also have Paula Boardman, who is Regional Vice President for Michael Baker, on the phone, if you have any questions for her as well.
Yeah. I just, I asked to have this pulled, and I just really wanted to ask one question that was specifically about redistricting. With the census coming up, we're going to be redistricting. I suspect it will happen under this contract, although I haven't been involved with it in the past, so I don't know if it, if it, but my suspicion is it'll happen sometime in the first half of next year. And I just wondered if this, is that something that we would use them for? Is there enough funding in here to use them for that purpose? Or do we have staff and skills on hand to be able to do that ourselves?
So we do have our GIS specialists on board that can assist with that. But yes, Michael Baker would be a resource for us through the redistricting process. I haven't yet coordinated with our staff over in the Recorder's Office to talk about the redistricting, but we certainly would utilize both internal and contracted resources to provide maps for review and get the redistricting lined up.
Okay. So there's sufficient in here to cover that, right?
Yes, there is.
That's all I was wondering. So, thank you. And congratulations, Matt, on your position as well. And thank you.
And I'll say, having Matt on our team and working with him and the GIS and asset management staff has been really great so far. We've made some good progress on things already.
Thank you, James. Thank you, Matt. Any additional questions, John or Lori? No? All right. Then can we have a motion, please?
Yeah. I move to approve Amendment Number 1 to Contract Number 20300031, as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The vote is 4-0 to approve the contract amendment. Thank you all. We'll now move to Agenda Item 13A for Possible Action. Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Purchase of Personal Protective Equipment and Sanitation Supplies from Various Vendors Through December 31st, 2020, for a Total Not to Exceed Amount of $901,659. And we have a disclosure and abstention on this. Lori?
NRS 281A420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting when I have a disqualifying conflict. One of the vendors that may receive an economic benefit from the sale of PPE to the city under this item is Apex Safety and Supply, which is owned by my cousin. Although my cousin falls outside the third degree of consequency for purposes of the term commitment in a private capacity, as used in Nevada's ethic laws, I believe that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my position could be materially affected by this familial relationship. Therefore, I will not vote on this matter.
Thank you, Lori. All right. Carol and Darren, who's going to start this? Carol?
Sure. Good morning. Carol Lakers, purchasing and contracts. So yeah, this is just, you know, as part of the $1 million that was committed by the city to provide city businesses with PPE and sanitation supplies. So Public Works did do some due diligence to kind of price and get quotes. They did purchase some additional orders, kind of to test and check the product was going to arrive. So I think they're still getting those. But this is just their request to allow the flexibility, because obviously, a lot of these POs will go over the $50,000 limit.
Good morning. Darren Schultz, Public Works Director, for the record. So this program has been rolling for a few weeks. We have inventory in stock, and we are currently delivering that to businesses here in Carson City. We opened it up for them to put in their orders the, kind of the latter part of last week, and we have over 30 requests already from various businesses. So we're supplying those businesses this week. The idea was to get started, get some product in. One of the things is, is you go online and you search it, and all this stuff pops up, but finding what, who will really deliver, and within a timeframe that is acceptable, and that the product is what they say. It's bigger than we expected, but we're making progress, and we've, we've kind of narrowed down to vendors that, that we can trust and that have a good name out there in terms of delivery. So Nancy might talk about this later, but the, we're still waiting for gloves. The gloves is a back order item. We can get a few boxes at a time, but any quantity, we're struggling with that. But we expect our first big order of gloves yet this week, and that will, that will be great. The other thing that is lacking is the sanitation wipes. We got plenty of the spray and plenty of the hand sanitizers, but the actual wipes that come all done, those are pretty tough to get right now as well. So anyway, this, this here before you is, we've kind of narrowed it down to a shortlist. We are still getting quotes, three quotes for everything, to make sure we're getting the best price from vendors that we can count on. But this, this idea here is that we can continue, we've already reached that limit on some of the vendors at the $50,000 limit, so that we can order more supplies as we start distributing these to the businesses. So open for any questions.
Yeah. Does it, well, talk to me after the meeting or later this week. I have, I have some sources that I can put you in touch with.
Very good.
That I've painstakingly found out.
Okay. We appreciate that.
Go ahead, John.
So Darren, you may figure out this question has something to do with this and something to do with future agenda items. How often is it that you find yourself with inadequate, not inadequate, but short of staff to take care of things when you're dealing with vendors in situations like this, when they, when you have to go through more than you expected? Does that happen often?
Yes, that happens often.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
That's a great question. All right.
Any questions, Lori? So there's been an issue with hand sanitizer around the country with products that are not what they are supposed to be. So is that one that you're particularly focusing on to make sure the product we get is appropriate and adequate?
Yes, we are. We're very familiar with that. We have a list, it's a running list of products that we shouldn't use, can't use. There's a lot of websites out there, national websites, that tell you that and what ingredients, and so we're being very careful on that. The good news is that the products that we should be using, they're backup distributing, and they're, they're pretty readily available. So in terms of the hand sanitizer, a lot of it, they, they want to, they don't want to just ship you a bunch of little bottles. They want to ship you big five-gallon jugs and, and which most businesses, that won't work for them. So trying to get it in a form that is, you know, appropriate is a little bit more of a challenge. But in terms of what's actually in there, we're, we're keeping our eye on that very closely.
And Carol, what is the plan with the additional or the excess $99,000? Is there a plan to order additional supplies with that, or is that going to roll back into the other COVID money and be spent somewhere else?
Are you talking in regards to what's already been?
Between, between the 900 and 1,000 and the million that we approved.
Right. So those were purchases, the, what's already been spent?
Those are the POs that we had in our packet that have already been filled.
Right.
Okay, got it. All right. All right. Any more questions? If not, then I would accept a motion.
I move to approve the purchases as presented and authorize the Public Works Director or his designee to request purchase orders for the approved purchases.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The vote is 301 to approve. Thank you. We're now on Agenda Item 14A for Possible Action. Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Proposed Amendments to the Carson City Public Works Placement of Small Cell Wireless Equipment in Carson City Right-Away Policy to Implement Aesthetic Requirements, Procedures, and Fees for Small Cell Equipment Installation on Poles and Streetlights in the City Right-Away. Darren and Dan, who's going to take this? Dan?
I'll go ahead and take it, Board.
And we will open discussion on Items 14A, 14B, 14A and B. I don't think we need to do C, because that's the second reading of the ordinance. So, so we'll open up discussion on 14A and B, but we will take separate action items on those two items.
Great. Thanks, Board. Dan Stuckey, Deputy Public Works Director, for the record. I just have a quick couple of slides just to go over some changes that have made since this agenda item is public. They're pretty minor in nature, but I wanted to go over them with you. There's a list of what, what is on the table for today regarding small cell, 14A, as you mentioned, amendments to the small cell policy, 14B, which the small cell policy was initially adopted in April of 2019. Just wanted to clarify that. 14B, Master License Agreement, and then 14C, as you mentioned, the second reading of the proposed ordinance. So I, you know, I reiterate this, I think, the past couple of times, that this is about the fourth or fifth time, I think, the board's seen small cell in some, some way or another. This process started in 2018. There's probably been, between Todd and myself, Stephanie, other staff, probably hundreds and hundreds of hours of staff time to try to get this right. We've had four working groups with the providers. Over those years, they were all well-attended by all the providers that are going to be players in this. It was a clear and transparent process from the city. We, I think this is about the 20th version of the policy. It's the second you've seen, but there's been internal iterations back and forth. The MLA, probably about the 10th version of the MLA, there's been lots of back and forth communication with the providers, not only through those working groups, multiple emails, multiple phone calls, multiple documents being sent back and forth. So what you see in front of you today is really two and a half years of work between staff with the providers to get to something that we feel complies with the FCC order, is balancing both their needs and our needs, and we feel really good about it. So we appreciate, I mean, as well, the providers, you know, working with them. They've been great, very communicative. And again, I just want to, I want to reiterate the amount of work that's done to get to this point. So with that going on, if I may, I'd like to address the policy changes and the MLA changes in this, in this presentation. First, with the policy, there's the first change that you see in front of you, page 11. This is Section 4B1. So it's in the fee section. And this is just more of a clarification. It's not changing the fee amount. The way it read before was, this is the pavement patching fee, the way it read before was $120 plus $3.91 per square foot over the first 25 feet. First of all, it should be 25 square feet. But we've kind of reworked this to just make more clear. So again, cost is the same. You can see up there, it's much more clear that it's a fixed fee for anything less or equal to 25 square feet, and then it's $3.391 per square foot for everything that exceeds that. That is the only change from what you see in your packet that we are recommending. So if there's no questions on that, I'd like to move to the MLA changes. The MLA changes, this is on page nine of the Master License Agreement, and it's 4.1, which is the application fees. which is the application fees in section B. And again, this is just to be consistent with the policy, another clarification of that fee. So just like we, we talked about before. Moving on, this is a, page nine of the MLA, section 4.2. Again, the attachment fees, and it's part B. Really, this relates to section 4.5D of the MLA. And what we did here is we have a fixed kind of default electricity fee that we charge, that would be charged annually, and this is to account for the electricity costs that the small cell equipment would be using and that the city would be paying. So we want to be able to cover the costs. This was based on analysis that's been done, you know, about a year ago on what we think small cell will be based on our research. The providers, each of them has their own equipment. Each of them has their own power usage. So one of the ways we've worked with them is we added in 4.5D, it basically says, if they provide a load study of what their equipment uses, we may accept that instead of the $691 annual fee. Because we want to, we're not in the business to make money on electricity. We want to make sure that it represents actual costs. So we have that language in 4.5D, which everybody was good with. But the change here is just to reference that section in these, in 4.2B as well as So again, if, if you just read 4.2B, it just adds that subject to the provisions in section 4.5D below, again, referring back to that section. And then the same thing on page 10, 4.2C, I guess it's Roman numeral III. Again, adding that language, subject to provisions in section 4.5D below, and that's repeated twice in that section. Any questions on that? Okay. This one, it's page 12, section 6.1D, Roman numeral II. I want to, this is, this is a, per the FCC order, essentially, the city has to accept all applications and process them within the shot clock. There, there's an opportunity for the providers to provide batched applications and really, per FCC order, we have to accept what they give us. However, we added this language because there is some language in the FCC order that allows the city and the providers work together to process applications in a reasonable manner. So we're, we're basically adding that language here that we will work together to process in, in a timely fashion. So this is, you know, I guess there is concern on the city side that we might get hit with 100 applications from each provider, and that is, is, we're worried about that concern. But I don't know if there's really anything except working with the providers that we can do to help that situation. So this is kind of language that we've added right in this page 12, section 6.1. That is all the changes I have to the policy in the MLA.
Dan, does that read correctly? Licensor and licensee agree to work together? To spread or T O T O missing?
Yes. That is missing, and we will make that correction.
And as the FCC allows that to occur, that you can mutually agree, is that kind of what it's saying? We can mutually agree to exceed the shot clock? That's the point?
This is Todd Reese, Deputy DA for the record. The FCC order is pretty explicit that the shot clock is the shot clock, is the shot clock. The FCC is also explicit that whenever we receive a completed application, that time starts the shot clock, regardless of what language we may have in our agreements. This edit is simply a plea or a, you know, in, in good faith, you know, we'll work with the providers as best, as best we can to process these applications in a manner that we don't overload our staff. If however, we do receive 100 applications on one day, shot clock starts for all of those on that day. The reasonableness or exigent circumstances comes in kind of into the consideration after, after the shot clock has expired. So once the shot clock has expired, then the, and the city hasn't taken any action, then the providers can essentially, you know, sue the city to take certain action on the, on the applications. The, the city then would have the response, the ability to show that, okay, there were exigent circumstances here and we're working as fast as we can, we're working in a very reasonable manner to process all these, but we just couldn't do it in this particular time. And, you know, I would prefer not to get into that situation, but if we get in there, we, you know, we will, yeah, you know, I have confidence with our staff that in the vast majority of cases, we'll meet the shot clock. And if, if we don't, we're, you know, it's not like we're going to stop working on it. We're going to continue working on it. And if there's exigent circumstances, then those will exist.
There, there was a concern that I had on this item with the submission of applications because it says in here, you can submit five applications at a time, but it doesn't state the, the amount of time in between submissions of five applications. And so the goal here is to try to meter the applications so that we can actually efficiently handle the processing of the applications. But there isn't really much we can do legally to prevent somebody from submitting five applications now, wait an hour, submit five more, wait an hour, submit five more. So I asked for clarifying language that would be basically a plea to the vendors to work with us, and that's where this language came from. So we're stuck under the regulations. However, we're asking, because we haven't done this before, that, that the vendors work with us and allow us adequate time to process the applications, not overwhelm us. And then Dan, I believe there was one more change on seven, or excuse me, six, five, 6.5C, Roman numeral II, deleting the word the in the second to last sentence.
Yeah. And sorry, I forgot to put that up here. That change was made Supervisor Ronkowski.
Okay. And the reasoning behind that is that that particular paragraph talks about the preparation of a pole for the installation of the small cell equipment. So to say the reinstallation of the equipment doesn't make sense because it was never installed in the first place. So by deleting the word the, it would be a future event to reinstall it. Stacy, did you have additional questions?
No, mine are covered.
No, so yours was that first item?
Yes.
Okay, great. Go with John first and then Lori.
Well, I don't have a question, and this may be better for discussion period, but we generally just move right on and pass or put thumbs down on things. I just want to make the point, and I make it as an addendum to what I asked Darren regarding dealing with vendors. This is a situation in which we have virtually no control, as Brad has pointed out, and by the way, I commend you for the work you've done on trying to make this as explicit as you can. First of all, the federal government, and you all already know, after three years and nine months, I have a great deal of concern regarding how the feds step on the states and local governments, the state steps on the local governments, and the local governments are left to deal with what falls out from that. That shot clock is ridiculous because what we have is a circumstance in which we have various vendors who may come to us and say, we want to put up our cells, and here are our applications, and now you get them done for us. And oh, by the way, getting into previous negotiations that, as I quote from our witnesses, hundreds and hundreds of hours of staff time have gone into this at this point, at this point. And they, they have asked us to be reasonable, let's put it that way, in what we charge. They have no concern for whether, and I'm not casting aspersions, but they're in the business of making money, and we're in the business of providing service. We have lots of other things that we need to do as staff and as a city for all of the people who live in this community. And our staff is already overworked at times, probably much of the time, and now we're adding something we've never done before, as Brad has pointed out. So consequently, I just wanted to on the record that we are put in an untenable situation. And so I hope that the vendors that come to us to put up these cell towers will do exactly as Brad has talked about and as you've talked about in this, that they will be reasonable in the timing of their applications to us. Because we don't have, we don't have the staff or we have to hire the staff to do these things, and it costs a lot of money. These are for-profit businesses, and some of the major players are doing very well, let's just put it that way. So I reiterate what I said earlier. I don't want them to sue us. I didn't invite them to sue us, but if they sue us, I think they're being silly regarding the people who live in this community. Thank you.
Good, Lori.
Thank you. What I'd like to do, if we can, Mr. Chair, is to really go through the public comment that we received because I think it's important that we address it on the record. And so mostly, I can see that, is that okay?
Yes, I was going to do that anyway.
Okay. We're on the same page after all. Okay. So most of their discussion revolves around the application fees, the fee structure that they're trying to indicate that we do not meet the FCC requirements of reasonable charge, if I were to boil this down to what the concern is. When I looked at the information you provided about which staff and the amount of time for you to work these applications, and it was things like one hour for the engineer and the fire marshal and things like that, in your estimation, does that appear to be reasonable and appropriate and meet the FCC requirement? I, I just want to dive right into the issue at heart here.
I'm going to go ahead and answer. Yes, it is reasonable. It is, this was developed in 2018. We sat down, we put a lot of thought into it based off the policy that we had in place at the time, there was some middle requirements based on historical, how we, how we process things. It is reasonable, and that, that is, that is what I feel.
I can just clarify too. It's reasonable based on the activity that you do on all other applications. It routes through, through each of those departments that you're asking in this application to do the same review process. So it goes to an engineer, it goes to the fire marshal. This is standard practice for the city. We're not treating this any differently. It's the same reasonable process.
Yes.
Thank you.
Dan?
This is Todd Reese, Deputy DA for the, for the record, for, to answer the second part of your question, Supervisor Bagwell. Yes, I believe that something like this would satisfy the FCC requirements. I would, of course, have to defer to Dan, as he just mentioned, as to the estimates of time and the process and how this, how this gets approved. So yes, I think as we stand now, it's a reasonable approximation of what we, what we, what we believe that our costs will be. That said, I also believe that as we start processing these, we should pay attention to how much time is actually spent on these. And if the time varies, then we can redocument the, redocument the time that's being spent and bring the cost analysis back before the board.
That prompts a question. And which way do you think it would go? Up or down in cost? Of course, that's just a guess.
I would have to defer to Dan. I, I don't know how much time our staff spends on regular applications.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's hard to know. I mean, I, there's, these are not, I think to the providers, it seems pretty straightforward, and that's typically how, I mean, if you're a developer or you're, you know, a wireless provider, I think it always seems like it should be so much easier to review these things, but this is also our right of way. I mean, this is a very important thing to the city. We want to make sure it's done right, and it meets all of our requirements. And to do that, it takes some time. So.
Thank you for that answer.
So we have letters in the form of public comment from AT&amp;T, Verizon, WPG Wireless, and there's one other one, T-Mobile. And they bring up several items that they would like us to reconsider or to table this matter, to allow them to have additional time to work with staff. I think the feeling of staff and the feeling of this board is that we've been working on this for two years, so another couple of months isn't going to get us any farther down the road. But could you address some of the items brought up by them in these letters and the reasoning that we have ended up on the policy in the Master License Agreement where we did? In other words, we've been through these items before. They're asking for them to be reconsidered, but we've already been through this cycle several times. So can you kind of walk us through their, their concerns and why your feeling is that we should just move forward at this point?
Yeah, sure. I can go ahead and do that. I mean, we talked about the, the application fees. I don't think we need to go any more into that, but they did the other, so I basically categorized them into different categories that are repeated by these providers. So fees, we talked about the application fee. There was a comment, I can't remember which provider, I think it was AT&amp;T, on the building permit extension fee, that $500 is, is too high. That is on them. That's not on city. We're, we're bound by a shot clock, so if they want to extend a building permit, that is on, that is their cost to do that. We're not, we're not making them extend it. We also, the reasoning behind that is there's concern in those working groups that, you know, one provider might come in and just clog it all up and reserve all these sites and take a lot of time and keep extending things, which is locking other providers out. So to be fair and equitable to everybody, we had to put language in here to, to prevent that. So that is the reason for that. So I think that kind of addresses the, the fees. There was talk about the wooden poles in downtown redevelopment areas, and really, our, our case on that and the reason why we, you know, feels pretty strongly about that is we've already invested a lot of money in undergrounding power. We have a great partnership with NV Energy in the downtown area. Obviously, we've invested a lot of money to beautify our downtown Curry Street project, we undergrounded power. We have another Curry Street project going on next summer that we're working with NV Energy to underground power. NV Energy just rolled out an underground power program to work with municipalities. I was a big part of that stakeholder group and developed a lot of that policy. So we're act, it's a cost sharing thing, so we work, because it's beneficial for NV Energy to underground power as well. So with those programs in place, we felt like adding more equipment to the power poles that we want to underground is maybe not ideal. So that, that's kind of our stance on, on that. They did mention on NV Energy poles as far as 90-day shot clock and why we want to stick to the 60-day shot clock. Todd may know more about this than I do, but my understanding is we do, we are allowed 60 to 90 days. I think the reason why we did it with the NV Energy poles is because there's kind of an additional step on the sense that if an NV Energy pole transfers to the city, there is that transfer type coordination that has to happen in additional to the basic review that we'd be doing. So that was the reason why, why we had a little bit longer shot clock for that. The electricity fee.
Before you go on, Dan, Todd, did you have any additional comment on that?
Certainly. Thank you, Supervisor Bronkowski. The, the FCC order speaks to a 60-day shot clock for co-location on existing poles and a 90-day shot clock for installation of a new pole. And the reason why And the reason why the NV Energy poles are listed under the 90 days is because they're new poles to the city. So in the case of transferring over poles to the city, that it's going to need a little bit of additional review and to the extent that they're replacing a wooden pole with a, a metal pole or a different structured pole, it'll take a little bit longer.
Thank you, Todd. Sorry, Dan, go ahead.
No problem.
Electricity fee, which we discussed, and I think, again, we're not in the business to making money on, on electricity costs. We don't want to do that. And we have very clear language in the MLA that allows them to submit. That doesn't mean if they submit something that we don't feel is reasonable, we're not just going to blanket accept it, but there is definitely, we're going to work with them on that to make sure that we're charging actual electricity costs. So I think, I think we've really addressed that pretty well, and I think the changes we're making today help with that, clarify that process. The last thing, you know, that I saw from, I believe it was, who's the Newman, who's the Newman Group? Is that AT&amp;T? I think it's AT&amp;T.
Yes, AT&amp;T.
They talked about the, the city interference and that they would like more language in there that, you know, minimizes what the city, how the city can interfere with the equipment. And I think we already have some good language of working together on that. I mean, but I also think there's a lot of, you know, traffic signals, emergency type communication, operation type stuff that we want to function right in our right of way. So I think interfere, I mean, we're going to work, we're going to work with them, but I think that's, I think we feel comfortable with the language that is in there today. That is, I think, I mean, I didn't go through every comment, but I think I've grouped everything together and addressed most of the comments that we received through the public comment. I don't know if there's anything else, Todd, that.
One additional one was the above-ground cabinets. They don't want to be held to creative design solutions on cabinets, they want to just put cabinets out.
Yeah.
I think that that is kind of a silly argument because we constantly change our building standards. And from the point of that change forward, then you have to comply with a new standard. So to make the argument that because there are existing cabinets in the city that don't comply with our current building standards, those didn't get installed after those changes were made. Once those changes are made, you have to comply. It's a pretty simple argument. The other one was the site reservation process. They wanted to be able to reserve up to 10 sites a month to a maximum of 30, 30 total sites at a time.
Yes, I can address that. So again, working group meeting, we talked about the site reservation process. Some providers want to reserve more, some providers want to be able to limit the amount they can reserve. So this is a great discussion that we had probably over multiple working group meetings. And this is the language that was agreed upon and kind of felt like it worked for everybody. Maybe not exactly what one wanted, maybe not exactly what the other one wanted, but I feel really good about fitting everybody's kind of needs with that language. And again, it's not to lock, we didn't want to lock up sites.
Any additional questions? Stacy?
No questions, just a comment first. I want to commend staff for working through what has been, I know, a very difficult process. It's new to us, it's new to everybody. I think you did exactly what our constituency would want you to do. Watch out for the rights of the city and our citizens and be as cooperative as you can to the industry that you're trying to regulate. So kudos for the work you put in. You know, I appreciated Supervisor Barrett's comments. All of this was sort of a ramming down the throat from the feds to the state. And not that 5G is not going to be beneficial to people. I think it just rankles people when, at a local level, we don't get to have a say in what we do with our right of way. And I will just say to the, to the folks in the industry, I, you know, we almost always get comments for and against things. I can tell you that I've gotten zero comments saying, gosh, I can't wait to have 5G. None. And I have gotten a fair amount of comments with concerns about health and everything else related to 5G. And I'm not saying that, that I am in the category where I believe there are health issues. I'm just saying that there are a fair number of people who don't want this to happen. So I, I think that the work that you've done and the comments that you've made and the defenses that you've brought forward in what you've presented here, I find that they're all reasonable. I find that they're all geared to allow the industry to move forward while still protecting our city's rights. So I'm in favor of what you presented and I'm not in favor of changing it.
Go ahead, John.
Thank you. I echo what Stacy has said, and I, I want to mitigate my own comments if possible. I, I think 5G will be a benefit in the long haul. I think it'll be great that we get it. What I'm concerned about is what we talked about earlier, that the feds have told us what we have to do and competing companies have come in here and they haven't, you know, they've been cooperative as much as they could, but as I said earlier, they're in the business of making money. So I don't blame them. I love the fact that in this country, people can lobby for whatever they want at whatever, at whatever level. It's part of our free speech advocacy situation. But by the same token, people have to understand. The comment regarding interference, who's interfering when they're coming in with something new and we already have things here? Brad's comment about the fact that we already have changed situations that make, that upgrade what we're doing, and they want to go back to what was done 25 years ago. It's ridiculous. So I'm happy to deal with Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile and the rest of them, but at the same time, they have to wake up and understand they're on our watch. One last question for you. In a previous presentation, you told us that you had checked with Reno. Have you checked with others and, and would you reiterate what you found out with Reno regarding their matters on 5G and what they're charging? And are we high, low, or do you know regarding other jurisdictions?
So as far as other jurisdictions in Northern Nevada, really Reno's the only one that's, that's got this in place right now. As far as how our fees compared, yes, I mean, we have recently, you know, since the providers have started to comment on it, we have compared, I want to say Reno's application fee where ours is 1,400, their application, I say, I think $1,297. And that was from an older fee schedule, so that might be even a little higher today. I haven't checked recently. So we're, we're pretty close in line there. And then a lot of the, you know, electricity fee type structures, right-of-way usage type fees, that's, that's very comparable to Reno as well. I haven't looked at Southern Nevada, to be honest, and where they're at, but to answer your question, yes, we're, we're right in line with Reno.
Thank you. This is a national rollout that the 5G are all hustling to do. I, again, want to emphasize what Stacy said. Thank you and the rest of the staff for the hundreds and hundreds of hours of staff time that you all have put in.
And as a note, and then we'll go to you, Laurie, I would just say that what other jurisdictions charge, we can compare as long as we keep that in context. It gives us a guide as to whether our actual costs are higher or lower than other jurisdictions, but that can't be a deciding factor. Go ahead.
Supervisor Bonkowski, to, to reinforce what you just said, that, that is correct. We can, we can look at, obviously compare where we are, the cost that we have with other jurisdictions. In the last week or so, I've received information, other jurisdictions, these are California jurisdictions, were in the 500 to $1,000 range. But you're correct, that the FCC order states that it's the city's actual costs. It's not a comparison with anything else, it's simply based upon, or the, or the city's approximate cost, reasonably approximate cost. And so that we have to base it on our own costs, not with anybody else.
Thank you for that. I just wanted to point out that, that that's just for our constituents to understand that we are checking all these things, even though we may not be able to go outside the boundaries of what the FCC tells us we have to do.
So I, I want to address what I've been receiving in public comments that are not related to the vendors. Is there a concern that at a later date, we're going to find out that it's not healthy, it's not safe for the community and that we could terminate those agreements if something is found out? And I believe we have language in here that indicates if it's no, whatever the current compliance requirements at FCC or a health standard, those could be applied and these agreements could be terminated. I, I just want on the record for the public, because that tends to be what I've received, we don't think these are safe, blah, blah, blah. So if you could put that on the record, it'd be great.
Certainly Supervisor Bagwell. The, the MLA and the policy do contain a fair amount of language concerning safety. The FCC has said that if the equipment passes the FCC safety standards, then the city cannot further regulate it. The city does have language in the, in the policy, I believe, asking that the equipment that's installed by the providers stay up to date with the most current safety standards from the FCC. And the master licensing agreement does have language that if a, if it's discovered, that if a health, if a health impact or health hazard exists that requires the immediate removal of the equipment, that, that could be done. I don't, my understanding is that, you know, the FCC and the industry has looked at their equipment and believe it to be safe. I don't have anything in front of me saying otherwise, but that language does exist both in the policy and the MLA.
I just wanted to go back to the fee for just a quick second and, and just definitively put on the record that we, if we pass this as it stands, that we're basing the fee on our knowledge and understanding of the cost it will be, our actual cost to perform the work, and not anything related to any outside or external forces, that it's purely based off of an internal analysis of the cost for us to do business. I just want to make that definitive and on the record.
Yes, that is correct. It was, the, the cost analysis was developed based off our internal processes, no outside influences, and we believe it's a fair approximation of costs, reasonable approximation of costs.
Any additional comments or questions, John?
Just one more. Our friends in the industry have had their say, and I think we're probably going to pass this despite their wishes for us to delay and negotiate some more. I mentioned, I am always pro-business, I'm still pro-business. I think they have to look at this as a cost of doing business. We, as a government, have a cost of doing business as well. And if they want to come here, they're certainly welcome, but they have to go with our cost of doing business. Thank you.
I, I would say that although this is another item that is not a deciding factor, it's probably a little easier for the vendors to pass along the cost than it is for us. All right, so we are now back to item 14A to take action. So if somebody would like to propose a motion.
I move to approve the amendments, including those discussed on the record today.
Could you please clarify that it's not amendments but corrections as read into the record today? So we have the amendment, but then we had corrections to the amendment.
I can say, including those corrections discussed on the record today.
Does the second continue? All right, so we have a motion in a second, any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The vote is 4-0 to approve the policy. We're now on item 14B, the master license agreement. Would somebody like to propose a motion?
Sure, I'll go. I move to approve the form master license agreement with the changes read into the record by our deputy public works director and authorize the mayor pro temp to sign the master license agreement and to correct any clerical errors.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Vote is 4-0 to approve the master license agreement with the changes read into the record. All right, we are now on item 14C, which is the second reading of the ordinance, Bill 112. So for possible action discussion, possible action to adopt on second reading, Bill number 112, an ordinance amending Title V of the Carson City Municipal Code to add Chapter 5.14, establishing licensing requirements, policies, procedures, and other provisions relating to the installation of small cell wireless equipment within city-owned rights of way. Is there any discussion on this item? If not, then I would accept them. What's the ordinance number tomorrow?
I move to adopt on second reading, Bill number 112, ordinance number 2020-13.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The vote is 4-0 to approve the second reading of the ordinance. We are now on agenda item 15, for possible action discussion and possible action regarding the proposed acceptance of a staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant program grant award in the amount of $3,613,711, and don't forget the 86 cents, to hire an additional nine firefighter paramedics. Chief Slaman.
Thank you.
It's called mutual aid.
Mutual aid.
Sean Slaman, for the record, fire chief, yeah, they were hiding in the hallway, they weren't coming out here until game time. All right, let me get this rolling. Technical difficulties, but again, Sean Slaman, fire chief, what we have before you today is, I believe at the May 21st meeting, we brought to you seeking permission to apply for a FEMA SAFER grant, which would fund nine firefighter positions with no federal or no local match to the federal grant. With that, there will be some cost obligations from the city that we'll cover as we roll through this. Having a little bit of, see if I can hide this one section. Not sure why it's not. If you don't mind the side portions we'll start with. That one? I don't see it. Oh, there it is.
Here comes that mutual aid.
There it is. See, that's why they are here. I may be slow, but I'm fun to watch.
So is there a firefighter IT position now?
We'll be asking for that next year. Apparently, the fire chief is, is not qualified for that. So what, what the SAFER grant is, the SAFER grant is funded through FEMA. It will fund 100% of entry-level firefighter paramedic salary and benefits. The objective is to help fire departments departments improve their staffing levels, improve their service to their communities, and meet federal recommended regulations, NFPA 1710 specifically, which outlines personnel and time responses to major incidents, including primary is structure fires. The SAFER grant is a three-year grant with no obligation at the end of the term. And again, it is 100% funded through salary and benefits at the entry level. It does not include COLAs and merit increases, and we'll cover a little bit of that as we get going here. This was also one of the other, this is certainly something that I would recommend that we support and that certainly strongly supported applying for, but we also took this to the audit committee in 2019 as they audited our overtime usage. And one of the recommendations out of that audit committee was that we apply for a SAFER grant to bring in additional staffing to see what role that played in reducing our overtime and reducing, improving morale and capabilities of the fire department. So it wasn't just an internal, it was also a recommendation of the audit committee that we apply and evaluate and study the effects and positive benefits of it. So SAFER requirements, as with any grant, there are requirements that go to it. So the number that we have applied for is nine firefighter paramedic positions. We were required to maintain that staffing level through the life of the grant. There is what they term a reasonable amount of time to replace somebody. So if we have a resignation, if we have a retirement, anything of that level, we have roughly 180 days to get somebody new on board, which is a reasonable amount of time to, even if we were outside of an active recruitment list, we'd be able to put that into place by then. It only allows for full-time firefighters. One of the additional requirements is that firefighters must be assigned to a fire suppression vehicle at least 50% of the time. Our rescue ambulances are included in that as they are part of our fire suppression response. So we will have no trouble meeting that. Additional requirements are performance reports and federal financial reports that are required quarterly, both quarterly and semi-annually back to FEMA, fairly detailed reports. Eligible expenses for the grant itself, so it includes salary and benefits, which also include Fair Labor Standard Act overtime. So our firefighters work a 56-hour work week through the Fair Labor Standards Act. Any hours worked above 52 hours is overtime compensated, and so that's included in FLSA where a normal work period is a 40-hour overtime. Firefighters are on a different schedule, so we don't begin accruing overtime until we work above 52 hours in that work week. Additional benefits that are included in that are the employee and employer contributions to PERS, workers' compensation benefits, health insurance, and then other benefits, other employee benefit options that are included contractually. Those include a uniform allowance and Medicare contributions that are included. Eligible expenses, administrative costs, so the cost of us to submit and oversee the grant and submit the reports, annual medical exam or physicals that we require firefighters to have are not included in that. Individual overtime costs outside of their normal work shifts, so if they're covering a shift for somebody or they go on a wildland fire that has been inundating us over the summer, those are not included. It doesn't include also personal protective equipment, so our structural firefighting gear as well as our wildland firefighting gear. So this is just an example here. So everything from our SCBA masks, which are individualized, to our structural turnouts and helmet boots, and then wildland gear and the same, those are not included. So we are required as a city or as locally to cover those. From an operational point of view, the advantages and how we will utilize them, SAFER firefighters will certainly enhance our current staffing depth. Currently, we have two relief firefighters that cover shift vacancies. This will push us to five relief firefighters. We're not increasing our minimum staffing levels, and that is where we're going to get the overtime savings out of this. So we'll have five relief personnel, our floaters, so to speak. They will cover any vacancies from vacation leave to sick leave to injury time, or if somebody is, resigns, retires within that time period, they'll be able to fill those positions, and thus, that's where we would save our overtime costs. When we do not have vacancies, there's an operational improvement or operational efficiencies that will be achieved through this grant. We will improve our firefighter safety on the scene as we will have additional firefighters responding on the same amount of apparatus, but our engines would be able to be staffed with four where they are currently staffed with three. And so we would be bringing additional firefighters within that same response model. It would also increase the total number of firefighters able to respond and mitigate incidents. It would, and foreseeably on some incidents, improve turnaround time on additional apparatus, meaning that they'll go available a little bit quicker because we have an appropriate amount of units and personnel on scene during that time period. Our cost savings, evaluating our current usage of vacation leave, our annual leaves, we're allowed by contract to have two firefighters off per shift, and then that's where those two floater firefighters come in and they would fill those vacancies. Then any sick leave, workers' comp, or any other vacancies, those automatically become overtime positions. This by contract will increase the number of annual leave boards from two to three positions on a daily basis. Evaluating the last several years, we are averaging about 280 days where we are utilizing both vacation boards. So if we continue with that trend, I would guess 250 to 280 days out of the year, we will have three firefighters off on vacation leave during that time period. And that still leaves us two additional floaters to cover any additional leave at that time. So with the nine, it'll more than cover the additional vacation board that comes by the contract of adding additional firefighters. At a conservative estimate, I estimate that we would save $300,000 a year in overtime expenses by these relief firefighters or these additional firefighters during that timeframe. So that will be a welcome relief both to the city's budget and to our firefighters. This summer, for instance, we just got an engine back. It had been out over 30 days. We rotated crews two different times on 14-day cycles, but kept the same engine out there. So literally for a month, we had four firefighters on that engine that were not working their normal shifts. That's all covered by our contracts. We get our money back, but that is time worked by our firefighters. And there's that tipping point where a little overtime is probably good for morale and allows firefighters to budget for certain things. But when you get too much overtime, the wear and tear on the body and emotionally and physically brings additional cost to that. So end of grant. And we talked about this at the last presentation. I believe at about the 18 to 24-month mark, we will come back to the Board of Supervisors and be able to show several things. One, we will be able to say exactly what we are saving on overtime on an annual basis. It will no longer be an estimate. So we'll be able to evaluate how effective that is. We will also study our sick leave and our workers' comp time over that time period and see if there's been a reduction or a change in that over that time period. Also, at that time, I believe it would be appropriate to me to bring to you some studies and data supporting what we do at the end of grant. And so that'll give us at least a one-year timeframe to plan for that. And those options can include everything from recognizing that the value of savings value is even more significant than we anticipated, and it may be worthwhile to keep the employees and firefighters as they are and assume those additional costs. That would be the most, the highest cost to the city. There is the option, as we are continuing to study the single-role ambulance model, and be able to offer them positions within that. That would be a lesser pay and a reduced PERS retirement because there would no longer be safety, but they would have a safe landing spot, and we wouldn't lay them off, so we wouldn't incur any cost to that. And then there would be two other options. And one, reducing those numbers back to zero or from nine to zero through attrition, recognizing there will be some cost savings in overtime as we go back down, and then we'll have numbers and data to support exactly how effective that will be or the actual layoff notices. If this is approved, the firefighters that we would be offering positions to are going to have in their job offer, the term of the SAFER vacancy. So they have a full understanding. We've already had discussions with the ones that we are interested in. And so they'll have a full understanding that there is no employment guaranteed after the end of the grant, which would essentially be October 15th, 2023. The union has wrote a letter to support that, understanding that they will represent the employees, the firefighters during that time period, but they also understand that there is no guarantee for employment and would understand if there are layoffs at the end of that time period for those employees. They also, in their caveat, will work with staff to support the studies and to do as I will, to find and justify ways to maintain the employment. But ultimately, it may come down to that fiscal decision. So those are the things that we will bring back to the board at the 18 to 24-month period when we feel we have enough data, but no later than 24 months into the, so that it gives us a one-year time period to plan. And that covers my presentation. So are there questions?
Yeah, sure, chief. On, have you developed a plan, and it sounds like you have, but I just maybe wanted to go in a little more detail about the hiring of the nine relative to rolling into positions that end up being full-time. So Captain Hunt decides to retire in six months, and I'm not pushing you out, but he decides to retire in six months, and one of those guys would roll into then a permanent position, and you would bring somebody else because we're required to keep that filled, right?
That is correct.
So are you, will you come up with a plan then on hiring those nine in terms of their seniority as you bring them on? Because the seniority is dictated by language in the contract. So how are you going to deal with that?
Great question. So we have already made that determination. So several, two of the employees that we would be SAFER firefighters that we would offer positions to are current BLS employees for the city. They, by their performance in the academy, would be ranked one and two, and we've been transparent with all of the candidates that we've interviewed in that process. The remaining seven, three through nine, would be by evaluations and performance in the academy where we will rank them. We won't rank them just off of the interviews. We want to see how well they perform. And so they understand, as of right now, we have verbal commitments from four firefighters that will be retiring within the next two to two and a half years. So if you're a one through four SAFER firefighter, there's a very good logical opportunity that you would be moved into a permanent position, then we would hire under that, and then that would be nine, eight, seven, and six in that process. So we have agreed to that. The union has been a part of that and has supported that.
Okay. I don't think Captain Hunt or Chief Horton are in those.
No, they better not be.
Good, good. Secondarily, I just want you to cover the fact that you'll still be able to go on out-of-town assignments with these firefighters, even use them for that. And there's still, will be overtime incurred that will show up. And in fact, in a busy wildland season like this one, that overtime may be beyond your budgetary amount. However, it is compensated and reimbursed, and that doesn't always show up in your line item budget. So I'm just giving you a chance to explain that. But in the end, you'll be able to analyze it and, you know, cover it, but it won't show up necessarily if you're just looking at the bottom line.
That is correct. So the firefighters, once they get through the academy, they are online as regular firefighters and firefighter paramedics. So they will respond to in-town incidents as well as mutual aid incidents, as would be expected of all of our firefighters. The caveat that I recognized, once we got this award, is using this year for an example, when we sign contracts, we'll use the California contract, for instance, essentially, they pay our overtime rate every single day because the firefighters that are on the fire are either on straight time or overtime. So if they're on overtime, that covers that pay, and then there's no coverage back at home because that would be an off-duty day for them. When it's an on-duty day for them, it covers the backfill for them. So by having additional staffing, we would actually be getting overtime compensation and may not actually have overtime that day. There's nothing in the contract that says you have to show that it was an overtime expense. So it could actually be an additional cost savings to the city as we went through a fire season.
Thank you. So, and just as a point of clarification, when we were in the audit committee and discussing this potential, one of the things that we did, because as you said, overtime was hard to depict and then process against the money you receive in reimbursements. So we added, if I'm not mistaken, we added coding to the time so that we're able to now articulate the type of overtime, and we will be able in your report, because that's also what was committed to the audit committee, is you would come back and be able to actually align that. So we will be able to unreimbursed overtime is what we're interested in reducing.
Correct.
So I think that that was great, that you were able to add coding into the system to help you provide that report.
Absolutely.
So my question, if you could please discuss for me the consultant fees that I see in the application on this grant, as I didn't see that information presented to us during the past two discussions. So could you tell us about that, please?
Sure. So we contracted with a grant writer that specifically writes grants for fire departments. The FEMA SAFER grant is a very, very competitive grant and a very technical grant. You have to have a very strong understanding of fire standards, National Fire Protection Agency recommendations and standards. You have, there's certain terminology and ways to write your grant to show the need for that. At the time, we had been without our deputy chief. We had been, the deputy chief had been out since the end of November, and we did not fill that position until the end of August of this year. So we were limited on staff and certainly expertise staff that would be able to assist that grant writer are to write the grant internally ourselves. So we had, I had used this grant writer previously and had been successful with him in the past. He has a tremendous amount of experience in writing these grants and has actually previously sat on the awards committee for these grants. So he's been one that has evaluated each of the grants and understands what the grant awards committees look at for that. His initial fees upfront were right at $1,000, I believe it was $1,100 to write the grant, a fairly reasonable amount considering the staff time that would have been required. His, by contract, his, and we've just amended the contract with him to space it out over a three-year award. So his contract is a percentage of the total award, which came out to $36,000, including the 1,100 or 1,200 that we utilized to write the grant with him. And so there will be a $20,000 payout this year, this fiscal year, and then eight and eight, and I'm rounding that. There's a couple dollars and cents as we talked in the original portion, the 86 cents. So we will space that out over three years.
And what is the consultant going to do over the three years?
So he also will assist us in writing, completing the performance grants and any amendments that we have to do, and if there are any waivers that we have to request. But the quarterly performance reports, as well as the semi-annual finite fiscal reports, he will assist us in preparing and writing. And his Um, and his, his experience will save, excuse me, save quite a bit of staff time.
Um, just, just as a note, I I would prefer to know about these things um when you're going to apply and that you disclose that during the process.
You're you're absolutely right, and at the time when we were applying, I misread part of the grant where it says administrative fees can be accounted back. Um, they can, only if you're a volunteer fire agency, and so um I missed that. And so that's why I didn't at that time um include that, because I thought we were able to include that in the administrative fees. So point taken.
So you're not a volunteer firefighter?
I I am not. Sometimes I feel like I am, but no.
I understand. My question is a simple one. I'm sure I uh can assume that when you talk about resignation and retirement, you're talking about these nine, which is unlikely to happen as I.
No.
You're talking about any resignation or retirement?
Yes, any resignation.
You're going to move them up?
Move them up. During the life of the grant, we would still have to replace them, so.
Okay, I just wanted you to explain that.
Yes.
Because you, you said it, but you didn't specify.
Clarify.
Okay, thank you.
You know, the real, the real challenge with these grants is, you know, you get down, and I think it's the last six months you don't have to fill.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the real challenge is you have somebody retire at like the seventh month mark, so you have seven months left on the grant. You have to make a reasonable effort to fill the position, and who takes a seven-month job? I mean, they'll find somebody, but you you know, you start to worry about quality of individual and you, in my opinion, so.
We'll call you up.
So Sean, I have two questions, one on Stacy's comments and one on Lori's comments. On Stacy's comment, um, my understanding uh on your previous presentation was that the nine safer positions that we would look at placing them um in service on the permanent positions if there was a retirement or um a permanent injury or a resignation, but that's actually not the case during at least the first two and a half years, because if somebody retires, you move somebody up and then you have to replace them. So we still have nine safer positions. So it's only until you get to that last six months that you could use the safer positions to fill a permanent position and not necessarily have to replace.
And start the attrition process.
I just want to make sure I understand that.
Yes.
That, okay.
I apologize for the misunderstanding in in the previous presentation. Yes.
I just want to make sure that there's no net absorption of the safer positions until we get to the end of the grant.
Correct.
Okay, all right. I I was hoping that we could just like move them into positions, but those positions won't exist.
Correct.
Okay. And then on Lori's comment on the consultant, um, if it's a three-year payout for him, what happens if he does not stay on for the full three years? Do we still have to pay him?
No, that's being written into the amended contract.
Is there a clawback provision since it's not equal payments of eight thousand, eight thousand, eight thousand, or what would be twelve thousand, twelve thousand, twelve thousand? In other words, he's getting the bulk of the payment for the three-year retainer contract upfront.
Mm-hmm.
So say he quits at the end of the first year, is there a clawback provision in that? Or is the twenty thousand gone and we just save this, the eight and the eight?
We are actually working on that right now, so I don't have a definitive answer on that. Um, I would support, and he has been very amenable with um being flexible with this contract. So um, writing that in there is something that we would be able, I I believe we would be able to do and that he would support.
Okay, that would be my preference is that 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 first-year payment be prorated if he does.
Understood.
Complete the contract. Any additional questions, comments?
Just a a thought, generally speaking, those contracts, because they're under fifty thousand, don't necessarily come to this board. I'd like you to consider bringing that contract to the board because it's so unique. It's not something you normally do in the course of under fifty thousand dollar contracts. Those are usually your standard. So maybe consider bringing that for us to take a look at the clawback provisions and other items. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, just one final comment before we accept a motion on this. Um, I think that this is the kind of out-of-the-box thinking that I appreciate from staff when trying to solve um some of the financial dilemmas that we find ourselves in. Um, the BLS service was another example of out-of-the-box thinking. So I just want to make sure that all staff knows that uh that I, and I think I speak for the board, to say that we all appreciate the kind of work and thought that's gone into uh coming up with some creative solutions to make us look good. So thank you for that.
Thank you. I will share that with him for sure. Well, I have a great staff. I'm blessed.
All right, then, uh, at this point, I would accept a motion.
I uh move to accept, I move to accept, this is written incorrectly.
Delete of.
Sorry. I move to accept the grant, uh, the FEMA safer grant for the period of three years. Gosh, that was hard to get out, sorry.
We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? There are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed say nay. Vote is four to zero to approve the safer grant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. All right, we are going to take a, oh, about a ten-minute break, and then we'll get to Title eighteen, since that's going to take us a while.
All right, everybody's ready. We'll bring the meeting back to order. We're now on Agenda Item 16A for Discussion Only, Discussion and Presentation Regarding Possible Amendments to Title 18 of the Carson City Municipal Code, which establishes local ordinance provisions related to zoning. Lee?
Good morning. Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. You'll recall, last month, we had this on the agenda, but you also had a lot of other things on the agenda. We didn't have much time to talk about this. But I got some comments from some of the board members that have incorporated, and today, we have more time to discuss our amendments to Title 18. Today, we're going to be discussing three chapters, 1802, 03, and 04. I just want a little bit of background. With the Planning Commission, we've been doing these workshops one chapter at a time. I know this is a lot of information to throw at you at once. It's three chapters, and really, this is kind of related to the COVID. At first, we were like, well, we can't have public meetings with the public there and get public comments, so let's hold off. But we've continued, and they've kind of built up. So I thought with these three chapters, we could bring it to you. If we need more time, we could take it for more discussion. But, you know, 1802 is the administrative provisions. I think what I'd like to do today is go through, we'll go through a little bit of chapter at a time and have discussion. I think most of the discussion today is probably in 1804 on the zoning districts and the uses. But just a little bit, you know, 1802 is administrative provisions, which just took a little bit of clean, requires a little bit of cleanup. A lot of the provisions for how we administrate, administer the zoning code are from NRS. So procedures-wise, there's not a lot to discuss there. Talk a little bit about some of the minor changes in there. With definitions, there's a lot of cleanup, and the definitions are going to be an ongoing thing as we get through other portions of Title 18 and changes and the need for any definite new definitions or changes. So that'll be a work in progress right now, just mainly deleting unused terms and combining terms that talk about a little bit. And then we have 1804, which deals with all the uses and where they're permitted, what zoning districts they're permitted in. So as I noted last time, you know, we are, we have these documents available, not only in your packets, but we're keeping a running list of all the updated draft amendments at carson.org/title18. I think in the newspaper, they got that message out as well. We haven't got a lot of public comment yet. We haven't got to a lot of things that are really with impactful changes yet. There's probably, I think, as we get to the next discussion, next Wednesday, the Planning Commission's taking on general provisions and Development Standards Division 1, which has some things. There are really some, there'll be some substantive policy things to talk about with them and then with you at a future meeting. But the approach we've taken, as you recall, we're not hiring consultants for, you know, close to $1 million, like the city of Reno recently did. So we're doing it in-house. And so kind of the approach, the idea was, when we thought people were going to be able to attend meetings, just to have multiple meetings. So with each chapter, we've taken it to the Planning Commission for discussion. We're bringing it to the Board of Supervisors for a discussion, which in that of the four, where that's step number two. Then it'll go back to the Planning Commission again for more recommendations before it comes back to the Board of Supervisors for final action. So that's been the approach, just to have a lot of meetings and a lot of opportunities for public comment, again, making them available online, trying to get the word out. And I think as we continue through this and the various chapters, and now what's online now, there's a summary document, there's summary documents of the changes to each chapter, like you have in this. So for the short version of it, people can go to that to see kind of where the changes are. And that may help in the review. So today, like I said, I think if probably the best, it's a lot, we could, we have a lot of time since the short agenda today, as much time as you want to take. But like I said, with the Planning Commission, they've spent about two hours at their last meeting, and even more before that with discussions. But, you know, they spent two hours discussing each of these chapters. So I kind of don't expect you to spend that much time today on each chapter. We've got a lot of comments going through this whole process since the Planning Commission has been doing it. So I think today, if we start with, go through the chapters one at a time, I'd like, you know, highlight some of the major or substantive changes for you and discuss those chapters. And again, I think I don't, I expect we won't have too much discussion on 1802 and 1803, and maybe some more when we get to the use districts and the permitted uses there. Also, as a general comment overall, just a reminder, we are kind of trying to look at substantive changes to the code in the format that it is now. So we're walking, we're walking through the sections in the format it is now, and not trying to totally rearrange it in the form it may take when we get together with the DA's office and really think about how it gets combined together. As an example, next week, talking with the Planning Commission, it's going to be 18.05 and Development Standards Division 1. There's a lot of crossover in them, in what they talk about in terms of storage containers, for example, the provisions in both places, they just shouldn't, we're going to, I don't know what the, how it's going to be, how it may be rearranged with the DA's office in the end. But the point being, let's discuss the substantive portion of it, and we'll get it into a technical format at a later date for your review. So with that, should I dive in with Chapter 1802? So, and a little bit of discussion on that. So in 1802, in your packet, you have the text with all the strike-through and underlined new stuff. You also have for 1802, a document that summarizes the proposed changes. And for 1802, you also have a clean version. So if you don't want to look at all those strike-throughs and things and needed to read it that way. So going through the summary of changes document, and again, it kind of says, this is intended to be some of the substantive changes. I would say that even at this point, in terms of the, how they are applied, some of these changes aren't substantive. So I think, but I think in the administrative provisions of 1802, the thing I would like to point out is a topic that has come up through the years as the Planning Commission and Board have reviewed master plan, special use permits, zoning map amendments and the like. And that's the findings. So one of the things that is relatively significantly changed in those sections are the findings. And kind of one of the specific issues with that is, you know, there's the findings about compatibility with land uses, for example, that the amendment provide for land uses that are compatible with adjacent land uses. And kind of that was the extent of what it says currently. So that the approach we've tried to add to this is to add some factors, to add like to that, the factors to be considered in evaluating this final shall include, and then there's a list of those things that should be evaluated, hopefully to help both the Planning Commission, Board, and public understand how the finding works. And I would say that in terms of 1802, that's really the only substantive change. Those findings relate to the master plan amendments, zoning map amendments, special use permits and variances primarily. And other than that, that's all I wanted to really highlight in that. Do we have any other questions on 1802?
And Lee, just, I wanted to just put on the record, one of the, one of the issues that is handed down to us in NRS, so if you look at page 16 of 18.02, which is page 325 in our packet, the Planning Commission, when they take action on a master plan amendment or master plan update, they're required to vote in the affirmative with not less than a two-thirds majority of the total membership of the commission. And I haven't seen that. Jason, maybe you can have some comment on this. I haven't seen that requirement elsewhere. And it's not the requirement of the Board, when it comes to the Board after the commission makes recommendations to us. We just have to have a simple majority. My concern is when you may have two or three absences on the commission, that they have to follow explicit timelines to take action. And if they don't have enough members at a commission meeting to take a vote on this, then what happens? Because if you can't meet the timelines, then it's automatic affirmative vote. How do we address that?
I'll start, and the DA can weigh in. Just because I have, I can give, we've actually had that occur. We've had an example of that where I think, I think we had a quorum of the Planning Commission, but that quorum wasn't enough to vote at a two-thirds majority in order to forward a recommendation of approval to the Board of Supervisors. And as you said at the beginning, this is something from NRS. It's a requirement of NRS that if for the Planning Commission to forward a recommendation of approval of a master plan amendment, it has to be by a two-thirds majority vote of the Planning Commission, of the membership of the Planning Commission. And there was a case where there were four members there, which is a quorum of the Planning Commission, but not, but not a two-thirds majority. They voted. We moved forward to the Board with a recommendation of denial with a 4-0 vote, which was not a supermajority. But the Board of Supervisors considered that it was, considered the circumstances, and I think, I think it was approved. It was nothing, I don't think it was something controversial. But ultimately, in this, it doesn't, it doesn't stop the amendment. It's just a recommendation to the Board, and then it's a simple majority of the Board to approve or deny an application.
I'm glad somebody knew.
You're not getting off the hook.
I don't have anything to add.
That's pretty much another example of NRS telling us to do something that doesn't make a lot of sense.
And then, Lee, also on 18.02095, which is on page 336 of our package. Number 2B. Did, did you have a determination on changing and/or there? On, so on B, it says, "After the conclusion of discussion and public testimony, the possible actions that the commission may take include approval, comma, approval with conditions, comma, denial, comma, modification of permit conditions of approval, comma, and limited suspension." But I believe or would be appropriate there because we don't have to do all of those together. It can be any one or combination.
I think that's an or. And I'll make that change. And again, I, you know, I will note as I go through this, I have, and as we have this discussion, I do appreciate and will use the clerical corrections such as that. But these are the types of things, and I want to get it as right as possible to hand it over to the DA's office to make it as easy as possible. But these are the types of things that are going to get looked at pretty closely and hopefully all caught in the end.
Do we have questions for Lee on 1802? Go ahead, Lori, and then Stacy.
Okay, so mine, I had sent to you in advance on 1802040, subsequent applications. And to clarify or clean up that language a little bit, six or 315 of your packet? Because it's two different issues. One is an application that's been denied. They can't submit a subsequent one. And then the second one is, they want to change one that's approved. So can you go over the clarifying language, please, for correcting that?
Yeah, for, the title on that is changed to subsequent applications because that is actually what the body of that talks about. And subsequent applications being what happens when somebody submits an application on a given property and then come back, comes back six months later to submit another subsequent one, another one. Well, the first paragraph relates to the case where they're denied and says, you can't come back, you can't submit a new application within one year unless it's substantially different from the initial application. You can't just try again for the same application if you're denied. The second paragraph, which I would say does need to be changed to be clarified with the, it says, "Where the holder, where the holder of an application for a development approval," and I think that should just say, "Where the holder of a development approval wishes to file a subsequent application." And that's where it says, so the second paragraph applies to that, when somebody has an approval, and they submit a new application that's different, and it says, "Your new, your new application is going to supersede the old one."
So an example of that would be Roger Shaheen's RV Park, where they submitted an application.
Vintage was another one of a new application that came in subsequently.
And then they came back later and changed it.
Yeah.
Just to slightly follow up, in the first paragraph, I guess the discussion is whether or not we strike the last sentence unless the director determines, because the top of it already is making the statement. If it's not, if it's substantially similar, they can't do it. And you're making that determination. So I just don't think that the last sentence muddies it up a little bit.
Yeah, if you're okay, strike. I mean, I think it's actually redundant because, kind of with all things, we make a determination all the time.
Correct. So I'm just suggesting that the last sentence on that paragraph goes out too. So that we're talking about substantially similar, tough luck, got to wait a year. And then the second one is, you have an approved development. That one, so that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, just, and it said, there was no attempt to change. It says that director determines now, but I think it is redundant to say that. You could be saying it throughout.
You make your determinations throughout all of the chapter. Okay. And then, just as a thought or a discussion point, as we make these updates or changes, are you updating the online version so people are up to date with the corrections? Or?
Yes.
Okay, just so that those are getting incorporated as we go. Okay, thank you.
I kind of twisted myself around here. I didn't even know what page I was on.
I know.
On 316 of our packet, for those board members following along, Lee, I just, and you communicated with me, but I just, if you wouldn't mind briefly touching on the, you know, my comment relative to notice distances, and I just, my question was, are we happy with the notice distances in general? Because it seems like we always get comments from people who are just outside. And your explanation was a good one. I just, I thought it was good to put that on the record.
Yeah, just the real quick background is that NRS requires us to notice all types of applications, all types of applications that are a public hearing, at least 300 feet from the property boundaries, and at least 30 unique property owners. So sometimes, we have to go more than 300 feet to get at least 30 unique property owners. We, Carson City has gone beyond that and require 100, we require the 300 feet for one acre or less, for projects that are one acre or less, 600 feet up to 40 acres, and 900 feet over for projects over 40 acres. So we've had, we've had a few, couple of projects that have gone up to 900 feet where the property size is over 40 acres. And, you know, I would say, we haven't heard comments that the distance is inadequate. I think some of the comments relate to other ways that we, that the city might be able to get the message out that there's applications of the interest in neighborhood. And I think one of the things I pointed out to Stacy is, we're trying to do that online. There's, through the development map, we are now mapping if somebody's interested and to go, I don't have it pulled up right now, but to go online. And we update it for all the, with the pins on a Google map as to what's coming up on the Planning Commission in terms of zoning applications. So I think there's ways to find out kind of what's in your vicinity, even if you're outside that noticing boundary. And I've found through the years that even when it's been 300 and it's a big project, people find out. They end up showing up to the meeting.
Yeah, the complaints that I've received over the years have been from people that are outside the boundary. And we've also had, I think twice, this is coming from the Board as far as policy discussion on whether, number one, whether those limits are appropriate, and number two, whether we should allow variances to that on specific projects. And the policy of the Board in the past has been that we set standards, and if we vary from those standards, then we just open it up for a turf war for every developer that comes in. And there's no way for us to manage that. So we set our policy limits, and we stick to those. And that's been our policy in the past.
And not just policy, but constitutional equal protection violations is really where that is kind of the root of that.
Yeah, and I wasn't advocating that, and I appreciate your comments, Brad. I mean, I wasn't advocating that. I just thought that this was our opportunity, if we as a Board decided those numbers weren't adequate, that we could expand that distance. But I, you know, the argument Lee made is persuasive.
Yeah.
My next comment is on 318, Lee, and I just maybe wanted you to bring that up at the top of the page, number four. And I sent you an email about this. And I, one of the things that I found, even going back to my time when I was reviewing these as our fire marshal, it was, it was kind of alarming to me how often some of the information that applicants put into the application was not accurate, like knowingly not accurate. And I just, I felt like, I mean, I kind of asked you, is there something we can do about ensuring there's an accuracy there and ensuring that the process allows for, you know, some sort of responsibility on their part to ensure that accuracy. And I guess I'm just kind of asking if you think what's there is sufficient, you know? And you indicated it was, but...
Well, yeah. And I don't think I fully answered that question in the email, because I'll add to that. So this is the statement on general application, saying that the applicant has the burden of proof to provide the evidence to support the questions of facts and support the findings for approval of an application. I think what the question was previously was, can we kick the app, can we get, throw the application back if we find erroneous information? And I did speak with deputy DAs regarding this very issue, and they agreed that we want, they are responsible for the burden of proof, and it's up to you to consider whether or not that information's accurate. But we can't, again, kind of the procedural, procedurally, we can't not review their application based on that. But it is certainly something we should point out, and that the Planning Commission and Board should consider in reviewing and making a determination on the application. So... So, so this verbiage is intended to capture that.
Okay. I, I'm not sure that, and I'd ask Brad and Lori to weigh in, that I remember a time when something came to us where erroneous information in an application was pointed out by someone other than the public. So, you know, I just, I think I would appreciate that, knowing that if you or staff catches something that is patently false, that it is pointed out to us.
Yeah, often, often the public catches it in the application before we get the staff report.
Right, right. On three twenty eight, oh two, oh seven, five, you made a change in there. It initially only said the commission could, as part of its review, could consider other property for inclusion. And you added board, which I think was the intent. I guess my only comment relative to that is that, you know, often when these items come to us, they're agendized so specifically that it would preclude us from fulfilling this part of the ordinance.
What it says is you have to go back, and you can direct us to initiate it, is what it said, initiate it, not change it. You can't change it because it's not on the agenda, but you can initiate it, which means we go back and get it on the appropriate.
I guess I would argue that, that I'm, you know, I'm not sure we could even discuss it, if it's so tightly agendized that, it's just a sense I have. Maybe I'm wrong. I don't have as much experience as you do with bringing these forward, but I just, it seems to me that carrying through on the agenda with the ability to do this needs to be considered in some form or fashion. Does that make sense? And I'm, and I'm not saying you change it at the time, because, you know, it requires multiple readings and you'd have to go back and do work, but I just, I'm going back to the times in my mind when something is agendized and it's, it's almost so specific that it's difficult for us to give that direction. Am I off track or?
I think the process would be that we wouldn't take action on the item, and we would direct staff to go back to revamp it.
Then you're delaying the whole project, the whole.
Right, that's correct.
You know, and I don't, I don't know that that's right either. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking of a scenario where we're doing a master plan amendment, as an example, where, you know, we've got a parcel right here that is going from one, you know, zoning classification to another, and across the street, because we've recognized that there's some tiny one acre parcel that got orphaned, and we want to fix that at the time. And so it's something that we want to clarify, but it shouldn't be, in my opinion, at the suffrage of the person bringing the application forward.
I think what I'd like to see is at the next strategic planning session, that we have a discussion on how to better craft our agenda titles, because this has been a consistent issue over the years where the, the title needs to be specific enough to be in compliance, but it needs to be broad enough that we can actually discuss other potential solutions or associated matters that have come up repeatedly. So if we could do that, I think at the strategic planning session, if we could have one of the DAs, deputy DAs, just, you know, have, set some time aside so that we could discuss that. I don't know if that would be Dan, Jason, or if that would be you, or.
Yeah, and it's, from a legal perspective, it just gets to be a real challenge, especially when you're talking about things like a specific piece of property, because we want to make sure the agenda item identifies that specific piece of property, because maybe a member of the public cares about that or doesn't care about that particular piece of property, but would care if we're just across the street talking about a different piece of property. And I'm sensitive to what you're saying, and we will certainly do what we can do to allow the board to have, you know, reasonable discussion. It is a challenge, though, to balance that.
Can't you be specific in the title like we are now, but just add at the end of the title, and discussion of associated items?
I wish. You know, it can't be that easy, because we used to have agenda items, or I think it preceded me, that said, and other matters properly related there too. And by the way, that's the way the legislature does all their stuff. But there's, there's a specific provision, and either a provision in the Attorney General's manual or maybe an opinion that said, no, you can't do that. That opens the door too much, doesn't give the public sufficient notice of, of what might be discussed, of what might be a matter properly related there too. So, so that creates the challenge, that we don't have that sort of catch-all thing to put in there. But we will absolutely work and try to help the board within those legal parameters come up with a little flexibility on agenda items.
One of the concerns, why it would be good to address this, is that sometimes developers will find themselves in a situation, if they have a property in escrow, where if an item comes up that they expect action to be taken on, and then something comes up and we want further discussion on matters of property related there too, and can't, and we have to delay that to the next meeting, that could end up costing a developer $50,000, $100,000 in extension fees. And so I'm sensitive to that, that we need to be able to take action efficiently and timely. And so if, yeah, if you can wave your magic wand and come up with a solution, I'd really appreciate that.
Good luck.
Just go ahead, sorry. Just while we're on this, on this section still, so I will work for, as terms of what this says, I'll work, I'll flag this so that it says what it should say for the appropriate process to legally do that and go back. But, and to the point that it could delay, it could, but not necessarily delay an application. I mean, it could be that you approve this zoning map and, but you say to initiate it for this other area adjacent to it. It also could be that you say, no, I, we can't approve this just by itself unless it comes with this other zoning, and then it might delay it to go back and renotice the whole area, both of which have happened before.
Right, okay. On three thirty, bottom of the page, four C, and I mentioned this to you, it just, you know, we're sensitive to it. It says, from any person at the public hearing or by written comment, so if someone calls in, you know, does that mean they're at the public hearing? I don't know, but it just crossed my mind as I looked at it. So if you think there's language here that would work, that's great.
Yeah, if he doesn't have, if we don't, we don't need to decide that now, but that's another issue, if, if it's adequate to capture that people can call in and make comment.
I think the assumption we went under was that they were in the room, so to speak, when we were getting started on this COVID.
Well, I just want to make sure we're not excluding that. I, you know, who knows if this is the last pandemic of our lives and, you know, who knows? So, and the only other comment was a discussion you and I had, Lee, and I think you got it covered here on, on three thirty five, bottom of the page, one C. And my comment there was, just because Lee and I had a discussion over an issue that that's happening, it's a potential SUP violation, happens to be, that I received a call on, and the ownership of the property is, is kind of in question, and this language was kind of vague in terms of, does the SUP follow the land? Does it follow the owner? Does it, and I don't think it was well defined, but you think what you've got here now is set.
Yeah, and specifically what it said previously, that when we were going to revoke a special use permit, we contact the applicant.
Yeah.
Well, as you mentioned, applicant, often the applicant is some prior owner, maybe not even the, maybe not even the prior owner that's no longer doing the operation in the Carson Town Hospital was a specific example, that's now the old hospital that's changed ownership, and they're not the ones that got, the current users of it aren't the ones that got the special use permit, but they're the ones responsible for the special use permit, because special use permits do stay with the property. So yes, so the language has changed to reflect that.
And as a side note, how do, how do people who acquire property like that understand the existence or are aware of the existence of an SUP? I mean, I just, just from my perspective, is that, I mean, the city doesn't have an obligation to make that notification, and property could pass through hands three times and doesn't get caught in a title search. It's, it's just kind of a curiosity. I don't know if there's anything that can be done about it, but it's conceivably possible that somebody could go through all the due diligence in the purchase of, of a property and not be aware that there's a special use permit that's critical to the operation of their property, that in fact would render it inoperable in certain cases.
Seller's real property disclosure, which is a required form by NRS, that has to be provided to a buyer by a seller of real property.
So it's the seller's responsibility to disclose that.
It's the seller's responsibility to disclose it to a buyer through that form, whether or not that gets done. I mean, if it gets missed, I understand your point, because if they don't disclose it, they may forget, frankly.
Yeah.
If they built a.
I could see in this case that they would have forgotten.
Yeah, if they built an accessory building on their property, and 20 years later they sell the property and it's under special use permit, they probably are not going to disclose that.
Yeah, interesting. All right, thank you. That's it for me on oh two.
So mine's more just a clarification of our earlier discussion. So I understood what you were trying to say. We may initiate that the orphaned parcel should be picked up in something. My question is, so I could approve the zoning change to move the applicant down the process and not disrupt any of that, and then request that you initiate a second zoning map amendment to pick up the orphaned property. Who pays for all those notices and everything? Is that our expense when we initiate versus if I were to deny the application and say, before I can consider yours, I really need to know that other property's in it? Is that two different initiations? And if not, maybe cover that in there, in this whole overall discussion? So it's clear on who's paying, because I know we have had that example before, where we've sent stuff back and then said, we're not going to make the applicant pay again for something. So when we get through with these rewrites, if you can cover the correct conditions as to when they pay, or just put in here, the board may waive a fee or something? Because I know we've had that condition before, where we did not make the applicant pay again.
There, there is a concern with that. You're only allowed four master plan amendments per year, and we take applications quarterly. So if you did what you just suggested, which was move the initial amendment forward and then initiate the process to do a subsequent amendment for like a single parcel or for adjacent parcels, then, Lee, how would you handle that? Would you delay the next quarterly application period so that you still had up to a maximum of four per year?
In theory, we might have to do that, but in practice, we've never had four times in which the board has amended the master plan, which, what he's referring to is there's an NRS limit, limit that the board can only amend the master plan four times in a year. So we do spread out applications, but in practice, when we don't, when we don't change it in February and then we don't change it in April, then we would, we would just schedule it for the next available meeting, because you're not going to change it more than four times in that given year.
Well, and on the board initiated change, in theory, there wouldn't be a hurry for it. There wouldn't be a, there wouldn't be a hurry. And to me, if, if the board is suggesting a change because we're just trying to clean up a neighborhood, I don't know how you righteously make that the responsibility of the person who, who didn't bring it forward. I mean, we're bringing it forward, so.
In that case, wouldn't the city be the applicant? And they would just ask for the owner to sign off on the affidavit?
The city, so a city initiated, I mean, going back to Supervisor Bagwell's first question, yeah, the city bears the cost. When, when the Board of Supervisors initiates any type of application, then the city pays for the, for the noticing fee, or, you know, pays the cost of noticing, and we just process the application without collecting a fee. So that would include initiative, a new one, or if, and I would assume, you know, in practice today, if you said initiated one for additional properties, we would send, we would pay for the notices to include those additional properties. Where was I, what was your question with that?
That was the answer.
Okay.
But also that, there's provisions in here for us to waive secondary fees of them.
I made a note of that, too, if there's other.
Okay, thank you.
If you require a different, a new application of a, that you have the ability to waive.
Thank you. I'd like to return to the discussion that Stacy having about accuracy in applications. And I'm most concerned personally with page three thirty, which is 21 of the document, 1802, zero eight oh, point zero eight oh, two A, says, any person requesting a special use permit shall file a complete application with his planning division, this planning division. The application shall include the information, site plans, and other materials determined by the director to be necessary to support the requirements. I find we have a lot of problems with SUPs, and I'm concerned about adding the word complete and accurate, if that's possible. And I know that puts the burden on you, again, to check the accuracy, but at the same time, and I don't want you to be Mark Zuckerberg, who has plenty of staff to do that, and you don't, but at the same time, I find that developers aren't too bad on this, but sometimes people who come in for SUPs, are developers or aren't developers, but they're, let's say, willing to fudge things if they can get away with it. That's my only contribution here on this 1802.
So a complete application, I don't think that's necessary.
And complete and accurate may be redundant, but, but the same, by the same token, I want them to know that when they come in, they're on the hook to bring us accurate information.
I think, I think that's okay. I'll discuss that with the, with the DA's office when I get it, talking about these other things. I think that's okay, because it's putting them on notice, it requires accurate application. The thing about even the ability to review that, so, again, this is an NRS required process. We have three days to deem an application complete. So we have a deadline, we get, sometimes we get two applications, sometimes we get 10 applications, we have three, three days to deem them complete. So in our, in our review of completeness, that is to ensure that they have the information that's adequate for our, for us to review it. It's not, it's not time for a complete review of all the elements of that application.
Once again, a higher former government telling this former government how to do things.
Hang on. Okay, Lee, on 1802, point zero five five, which is the fee schedule, which will be removed from Title 18.02 and adopted by resolution, but can you tell us if the fees that are on the schedule included here, are those based on actual costs, or are those fee amounts just, over the years, have they just kind of been picked out of the air? I just want to make sure that these fees are appropriate, since this is our opportunity to change them or revise them if, if it's reasonable.
Well, I think we have the opportunity to change it at any time, but the fees are currently based on a fee study, a time and materials study that was done about 15 years ago. And even, even at that time, I would say this fee schedule is roughly a 50% recovery cost as determined back then by that study. That's not to say it's worse than that now, because the cost of things has go up, have gone up, because our processes are different now in processing an application than they were 15 years ago, which in some cases may be more efficient, so maybe it takes us less time for some of these than it did before. But, but I would say it's, it's no, I would probably, it's probably no better than 50% cost recovery in terms of the application fees, but, you know, other than, as was discussed earlier, than just looking at what others charge and comparing to that, it would really, it would really take another cost analysis study to, to get an accurate picture of how much it should be your cost now for us to process applications.
Based on feedback from applicants, are there any fees in this schedule that have stood out as being maybe unreasonable or that would need to be adjusted?
You know, we, I would say we don't get a lot of pushback on the fees that we charge. I think we're pretty well in line with, with what others charge. I don't, I don't think we're the lowest, but we're not the highest either. Sometimes from residents, you know, it's a $2,400 or so for a special use permit for a residential property for, for an. a residential property for, for an accessory, for a detached accessory garage of a certain size. I mean, that's, that can be a pretty good portion of the cost of a, of a detached garage. And maybe, maybe fees, maybe fee structures aren't the way to fix that. As we get on to future chapters, we're, we're moving towards not requiring so many special use permits for residences doing detached garages, kind of raising the threshold for that. So that's one way to address that. But I would say it's, it's the residential stuff where relative to the cost of doing business is proportionally higher.
Right, and you bring up a good point because, as you know, I did in addition to our detached garage and it cost me $10,000 in permit fees, special use permit application fees and engineering fees to have the plans drawn for the application before I ever got to the building. You know, and so for a lot of people, that makes the difference between whether or not they can do a project.
Yep.
Laurie?
Thank you. So my question was really back or maybe a comment on 1802.080. Do we on the actual application have a certification? I hereby certify the information herein is accurate or whatever, under penalty of perjury?
Yes.
To give the strength to, better not be fibbing because if we find out you are, we can put a $10,000 fine on you or whatever because you knowingly falsified this application.
I don't know about the $10,000 penalty, but we have.
That's a statutory thing.
But we have, yeah, yeah, no, there's something that they certify that the submitted application is truthful and correct. Yes.
I'm just recommending that sometimes if you add the little statement that you're subject to a $10,000 fine, makes them go, whoa, what? Just, just a thought that we could always look at the application to strengthen that section potentially, just to drive home the point.
Oh, no, I just say, good to know that that's there as a backup, but by the same token, that gives them a warning, as you say, right there in the, in the code.
All right. Any additional questions for Lee on 18.02? Okay. Then we'll move on, Lee, to 18.03.
Okay, 1803 is just the list of definitions and it's, you know, the definitions of terms that for some reason need, need to be defined that might be different than the standard Webster's dictionary definition for the purposes of how they're used in Title 18. The first cut of this was that there are terms that aren't, don't even appear in Title 18 anywhere else except in the definitions and those came out right away. Then through kind of all the other things, we've, we've combined some uses. As we get to the use tables, you'll see there's a whole bunch of different types of retail uses that are defined that are just going to be combined into a use called retail uses. So those type, those definitions are deleted and other similar combinations. And then, you know, I would say on, on page 422 of your document is the list, the summary of changes. And again, it's not all the changes in there, but maybe some of the substantive ones where we're actually changing the words of what something means or combining some things. Like we added a definition for conditional use because that's the term we use for special use permits. We added a definition for initiate because that relates to conditions of approval of when you, all, all applications, when you initiate an application and it's never been defined, so we add a definition for that. And there's some other clarifications. You can see, I won't go through all of them, but, but a couple that I will point out is you'll see in the changes, we have secondhand dealer and thrift store and the definitions changed for those. And that's based, so there's changes to the definition, excuse me, relate to changes in 1804 of where these uses are going to be permitted. Secondhand dealer currently is the seller of used goods, but only one commodity. So it's a pretty narrow list of use. And I think so generally speaking, that the, the philosophy in working with the Planning Commission on where uses are permitted, if somebody is selling retail goods, it's retail goods, who cares what it is type, generally speaking, there's, there's some cars. Now, selling cars is different than a retail use, so that's listed separately as, as an example, but even if it's used goods, what's, what's the difference? So what, there's consignment shops, there's things like that. So the definitions are changed to reflect that. But also thrift shop, the definition is changed. So, you know, right now thrift shops are prohibited in retail commercial, which, which we actually, it's the sale of, right now, and it's the sale of used goods. It's a very broad definition, so there's a lot of types of uses that are precluded from retail commercial because they fall in that definition. So these definitions are amended so that a secondhand dealer includes a lot of different types of used goods and a thrift shop are those that have drop-off donations. So that's the distinction. So that's still the fish, goodwill and those types of stores that where people are donating things and have drop-off are thrift store and maybe shouldn't be in the downtown or other retail areas, but are still, are still permitted and still defined as thrift stores. So I guess that's kind of the only thing I wanted to mention in particular about definitions. I'd be happy to discuss that or any other questions you have.
Any questions or comment on 18.03, Laurie?
Just a general comment on definitions. So just even for my own, running through the tables, you know, it checks whether or not there's a definition. And you're indicating, I'm guessing, that if it doesn't have a definition, it has the standard meaning, meaning to it. But whose interpretation of the standard meaning? Is there something that we should add in 1803 that says the standard, anything not defined but used in this code? Is that the director's discretion of what standard means? I'm just saying, what do you do if you have an argument over a definition that is not Who picks it? I'm pretty sure, but where does it say that? I'm just bringing it up and you can look it up later because I didn't see any disclosure in the definitions section.
It would be, it would be at the very front, which I'm trying to find right now.
Yeah, it's 379 and I didn't see anything unless I just.
Yeah.
Went through it. I don't see a comment giving the director the authority for those items not to find. Just a thought.
That's where, yeah, it belongs at the beginning of 1803.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
And if I could just chime in here, there is, there is an accepted rule of statutory interpretation that does provide deference to an agency that is charged with administration of a certain set of laws. So I think as, as a practical matter, under, under that rule, Lee and his folks, their interpretation would, would get some deference from a court if, if we ever had to, you know, deal with that.
Without having to specifically spell it out, you're saying?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, and piggybacking on that, and this is maybe a stupid and uninformed question, but I noticed you've taken some things out. Page 381, air rights, ambulatory, and animal slaughtering are all gone. And term not used, what does that term, term not used mean? Is it just never come up or?
Yeah, air rights doesn't come up in Title 18 as a, as a term that's used. So do, do a search of Title 18, the definitions is the only place that shows up.
Well, and, yeah, that's, the definition is what sort of is the tail that wags the dog, let's put it that way. Yeah, so I was curious as to why they were taken out. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments on 1803? All right, then let's move on to 1804.
Well, we'll be here a while.
Yeah, okay, yeah, 1804 does contain all the list of, of uses that are permitted in all the zoning districts. You know, as it, and, you know, one of the, one of the major changes in formatting is to go from this, and as it's in there, right, currently, there's a list of permitted uses under each zoning district description in text in the code. And so we want to move from that to the table format, but in terms of readability, it's even worse than that now because a use that's permitted in the general commercial zoning district is not even necessarily listed there because it refers back to prior zoning districts, which refers back to the prior one, which refers back to the prior run. Just a modern way to do this is to have a table that shows the zoning districts and what's permitted. So that's, that's the direction we're going. That's how I'm showing it to you. I think it's the easier way to see where different uses are permitted. In discussion, and then so the philosophy with the Planning Commission has been also to combine this huge list of uses and combine uses where appropriate. I think I had an example just going through the, in the, in the Cs alphabetically under, under retail uses, you, you have a coin, you know, coin store, computer store, costume store, that are all retail uses. You don't need to define each one, you know. So we're trying to combine a lot of those uses and just call it one use, which is retail sales. And so kind of going through the whole tables, we've tried to do that to the extent possible. And then more substantively, there, the, and, you know, but with a lot of discussion on the Planning Commission, it's kind of asking, well, why aren't these uses allowed in more commercial districts? And I'll start by saying, in residential districts right now and as it's before you, there's no changes. So those that are watching, are we going to allow more commercial uses in residential zones? Right now, permitted, everything in residential zones is proposed to say the same. So when I talk about expanding of where uses are permitted, as I talked about, secondhand businesses, used, used goods dealers, if we're talking about non-residential districts, commercial, commercial zones. And let me switch this over to our, this is our GIS with the zoning map pulled up on there and I'll kind of refer to this as I, as I talk a little bit about this. So a couple of things is generally, there's an expansion of retail sales into, into neighbor, into more, more, more commercial, more retail uses permitted in retail, commercial zoning districts and also more retail sales in the neighborhood business zoning district. So that's one, that's one of the substantive changes that's in there. There's retail sales are being moved into being permitted in neighborhood business zoning districts, kind of all retail sales. Currently, there's some of those individual uses, some of those individual retail sales are listed as permitted in neighborhood business. And so the proposal is just to make all, all those uses that fall in definition of retail sales permitted in neighborhood business. So the next question is, where's, where's neighborhood business? Well, neighborhood business is, there's not a lot of it. It's, it's one of those zoning districts as it implies, it is generally a smaller area close to a residential neighborhood. I think where I am now is downtown, so I need to move a little bit for, like for example, down, down Fifth Street here, there's neighborhood business next to single family here, there's a neighborhood business area where it's surrounded by residential on, you know, on, on all these sides. So neighborhood business is generally smaller areas.
Fifth and Solomon.
Yep, this is, this is Fifth and, Fifth and Solomon. There's nothing here right now. This is the Lampa property, but in terms of zoning and, and it's similar, there's some other locations for that. On, on Roop, this is the cemetery and on Roop Street, there's a little neighborhood business and what's there is a couple, is a couple offices right now. And then you have, and while, while I'm on the map too, the other, the other zoning district I want to talk about that's similar is residential office. Residential office is more of a transition zone between commercial areas and residential. So residential office generally abuts both commercial area on one side and residential on the other. For example, on the west side of the downtown, we have Carson Street running here and then two streets over is where the residential office starts. And then it abuts, then farther to the west, it abuts single family, single family residential. Similarly, over here on the east side, you have general office and then single family residential with residential office between. There's some others throughout the, throughout the city. This is where it's mostly located, but it's generally the same principle of, of a transition zone between commercial and residential. So retail sales in neighborhood business, more, as well as personal services in neighborhood business, there's also an expansion of, of personal service uses into residential office locations with a special use permit. And, and with the thought being in terms of the residential office, and I think there was some discussion and I'd like to get some feedback on retail uses as you, because as it's before you, the retail uses are still not permitted here. But kind of the discussion with the Planning Commission of allowing more personal service uses in the residential office is based on, well, if they meet the other standards in the residential office, including having enough parking onsite and other standards, why, why can't you have those uses? With personal service uses, those tend to be uses where you either have an appointment or there's not, you know, it's like a beauty, beauty shop, which is listed separately, but those types of things where you have an appointment, there's limited clientele at any given time versus, versus retail use that you could have a shop full of people at any time and the impacts close to, close to residences. Again, I think this is, this is for, for good discussion if the, because some feel that, I think, you know, you could do retail uses for, for small, for small retail shops in the residential office if they complied with the other standards that apply to commercial development. I don't know, so I think that's up for discussion today. That's kind of an overview, I think, for, for me, that's an overview of the general philosophy that the Planning Commission has taken so far and us and looking at the, at the uses and where they should be. And we have the map up there if you want to take a look at any specific areas and I'm happy to, for questions at this time.
You want to start, John? Do you want to start? You have any comments or questions on?
Not yet.
Okay, Laurie?
Okay, thank you. So I would like to discuss, first of all, just, I'm having a hard time understanding the overall difference or reason for a difference of neighborhood business and retail office. So I'd like to start with the overall philosophy because they are both adjacent to a residential zone. So I'm really trying to get why, where's my distinction? When I look at the map, I'm having a hard time understanding the distinction. Why aren't those the same?
I mean, I think that's a good policy question to ask now. I think historically, residential office was historically a more, actually more restrictive than neighborhood business, which from looking at the map, isn't necessarily intuitive. You know, when you think about the transition zone now. So I think that's, that's worth consideration today of what uses you allow because, because it, current, currently, there's more retail uses allowed in those neighborhood business zones, which as I showed are really isolated, more surrounded by residential than even residential office zoning district. So predating my number of years here, I'm not sure what the thought was back then, but it is, residential office is currently more restrictive. I don't know.
I think you could start too with that residential office is located in a house and neighborhood business is in a commercial building.
That, that's, that is typically, that is typically true. Residential, that is a good point. The residential office zoning is, is in neighborhoods that were in the past residential neighborhoods and are transitioning to offices and other commercial uses. Neighborhood, all those neighborhood business areas are not, I don't think there's any that are houses, they're all commercial buildings. But that's not to say that in the residential office, you. But that's not to say that in the residential office, you have to use, use the existing house. There's some historic buildings there, but it's not, that's not necessarily the case that you wouldn't build a commercial building in residential office, which I think there's some cases.
So is that, can I, can I ask, do you mind, Lori?
No.
So on, if you have a vacant lot in a residential office zoned area, you could, we don't have a requirement that says, whatever you put, it has to look like a house. We don't have that requirement.
We do not, with the exception of the west side where
Historic district.
Much, much, but not all of that residential office is in historic district. Then they have standards.
Right.
Dr. Gibbons' office is an example of a new building that was built in an architectural style. He probably, he went, he went above and beyond on that.
Same with the Glenbrook Company, and, you know. I mean, maybe, to Lori's point, maybe that's the difference. Maybe we restrict it in that way. Because to me, residential office is, as Brad said, you, you want, you want the feel of a residential neighborhood. You know, you, at least that's how I feel. So to me, it's less about the occupancy to a certain extent, but more about the way it looks, as long as we're talking broadly. Sorry. Thanks for letting me interrupt.
And I, and I think, yeah, the historic district standards would address that. So the fact that that neighborhood, now, there's other, there's other neighborhoods, for example, on the east side that aren't within the historic district that are residential office. But that's true today. That's true today that somebody could build an, they could tear down an old home and build an office over there, under, under current standards.
But I, I think I'm kind of, what I think we're trying to get to is, I agree with what he's saying. I want more of the uses allowed, but it's the building exterior that you're trying to keep characteristic with the neighborhood, if that makes sense, right? And so what we're suggestingly is we look at, for instance, what was I just reading? You can have an architect in the neighborhood business, but not in the retail office. That doesn't make any sense to me. So I think on those two, I'd rather look at residential office being primarily, it has to look like a residence. That's what determines it as RO versus neighborhood business. But I think most of the neighborhood business activities, I mean, I certainly wouldn't put a gas station in RO because of what you said earlier. I'm an appointment-based business, an architect and insurance company versus I'm going to have cars every two minutes driving in there. So we're just suggesting that you should look at residential office having the outside characteristics of a residence and allow more uses.
I think that it's right in line with the direction that the planning commission is talking about. It's like, really, is, we don't, what's going on inside, as long as the character is the same. And I think, so I think that specifically, you know, I was looking at the, you have the setbacks in heights, and obviously, the permitted height is less in the residential office zoning district than it is. But I think that's something that can be addressed more specifically in the, in the design standard, development standards, to talk about the compatibility and be a little bit stronger in talking about that residential neighborhood district, which is something that, I appreciate getting this now, because we'll talk about it next week at the planning commission.
And on the west side, in the historic district, a commercial building wouldn't be allowed.
Yeah, the, the design, the design element, you have to comply with the, it's not necessarily you're going to build a house that looks like a 1900 house, but there are design standards they have to follow. They have to follow the historic district design standards, even if it is an office or other type of use.
Right. So our office at 1,000 North Division is in the historic district, and we had to get a variance from the HRC, because it's an office building and not something that looks like a house. But because we're on the very edge of the district and right adjacent to the old hospital, we didn't have a problem getting the variance. But, you know, the HRC is never going to allow a commercial building to be built in the middle of a residential neighborhood. But that doesn't address the RO zone districts in the balance of the town. So we just want to make sure that we have consistency throughout.
So I'd also, would, can you bring up the TC zoning, tourist commercial? Because I'm just having a little difficulty on that one too. And I'm sure there was a reason originally, but 15, 20 years later, we can look, let's look at it.
Yeah, tourist, tourist commercial is, yeah, that's another, that's another area where there's a lot of changes. So tourist commercial is this area, this is the only area where it is in the city, and it is north of College Parkway. And if you look at how it, the freeway runs through here now, and if you see it, how it crosses the freeway, this is old hot, this is Old Hot Springs Road. It was, predates the freeway, it was along Old Hot Springs Road. The property owners thought at the time was, is when that freeway comes, it's going to be a great place for casinos, going to be really visible from the, from the freeway, have good access and all that. And what actually happened was, it has horrible access from the freeway, and there's walls up, sound walls up, and you can't see anything. But it, it's, it's a remnant, it was, I mean, just the brief history of it is, there were uses in there, the, it was one property owner at the time, he didn't want the city to change any of his uses with the last one. So there are uses that are only listed in tourist commercial, and there's uses that aren't listed there that are listed in all commercial. So that was another real cleanup to look at appropriate location for that. But in going through the tables and what uses are appropriate in location, it's in consideration that that is where tourist commercial is located within the city. And it's where the, just for reference, it's, you know, where Sassafras and the Hot Springs is, and, and continuing down even on college, to College Parkway where Taco Bell is.
Maybe my question, I can hone in a little bit better. Is there anything that is only permitted in TC? Why isn't it general commercial is what I'm getting to? So when I look at the tables to see what is permitted in TC and only TC, there's nothing, right?
There should no, there shouldn't be anything left.
So then the question becomes, why do we have TC?
Well, it wouldn't be because something's permitted there and only there, but that there, as written, there's probably, it's different than general commercial. There are differences from where, from what's permitted. I think if you go down the list, you'll find that it doesn't match general commercial all the way. And I'd be happy to do that exercise, and if it did, maybe there's direction to go back and make the zoning change, but don't conflate the changing zoning on individual properties with the text amendment. I think we should, you know, look at the, look at the code and where the appropriate things are. I don't think you can just say, let's just change that, there won't be any problems with changing that.
I didn't say that. I'm asking you to look at it, because I can only find pawn shop.
I mean, obviously, so
Can't be allowed in the TC, but is in general commercial.
The Big White Elephant property on that is the property under the airport flight path. It's the, how big, how many, how big is that, the 40 acre piece there? That's been the subject of lawsuits in the past, been the subject of development proposals. It's where the RV park is currently proposed. So the uses, that's, and it's adjacent to single, one acre, single family residential. So that neighborhood's very sensitive to the types of uses that are going to be permitted there now. That's not to say what's, they'll be happy with what's proposed as it is now either, but, yeah, I, we support looking at it, and if there's another zoning district that's appropriate.
I only see pawn shop.
Okay.
Is allowed in general commercial and not TC, which I'm not sure how come pawn shop is not okay. But anyway, you can take a look.
Good, thank you.
Did you have other questions?
And then the, the other one I already wrote to you about was the flea markets, indoor/outdoor flea market. And you said you were going to fix that out of the, it's not in industrial use or whatever, because it was repeated.
Yeah, for flea mark, for flea markets, it's in the table under industrial uses, but it, it shouldn't be, it's, it's under retail uses, and it's correct in that portion, so, yeah.
Industrial. And B, that was.
Stacy?
Oh, golf course.
Flipped off. So it can be in general commercial, retail commercial, as special use permits, but it's permitted in the TC. Just, again, just take a look at the consistency for me, please, on golf course. Page eight, 485.
Yeah, page four, I'm at 450, well, I see it on 452.
It's in maybe multiple places?
Yeah, yeah, because
Depends on which set of things you're looking at, right?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering why it's permitted in one and special use in the others.
Well, because, yeah, I'm not proposing a change there. It's permitted now in tourist commercial, and that's one of those.
But again, I, when you're looking at TC, look at the whole.
Okay, I'm just waiting for you to finish writing. I was just waiting for you to finish writing, taking your notes, and to make sure you get everything down.
So, you know what, I think, I think I went back, I want to make sure
I have more.
With the, I know, with the, but with the residential office, and maybe we're, maybe we're still going to talk about that. I got the impression, and I didn't make that note yet, that, oh yeah, maybe I did, RO design standards, but allow more retail uses in residential office and address it.
Right. Retail and service uses, yeah.
Thank you.
And if you go to page three, which in our packet is page 427, on mixed use districts, right now, we have one mixed use district, which is downtown. And I would just ask that when you go through this process, to look at the overall master plan, to see if there's other areas of town that might greatly benefit from a mixed use district. For instance, on the east side of town, the Plateau Project, Lampa Ranch, is, you know, under the specific plan, they have mixed use, but it's not in a mixed use zoning district. That was put in under the special plan, correct, if I remember right? So I would just look at, are there areas in town that would benefit from mixed use? And I think that the answer may be yes, because I think that going forward, you're going to see more vertical construction as opposed to horizontal construction, and you'll see maybe two and three level buildings where you have retail on the bottom office on the second floor, residential on the third floor. That may be appropriate in more areas than just downtown mixed use. So that's just a comment. On that same page, if you look at the title, agricultural rural districts, it's just, the R should be capitalized. Then on page 429, which is page five of 18.04, just for consistency's sake, when we're talking about multiple zoning districts, can we go in largest order, largest parcel to descending parcels? So if you look at 1804045, it's in descending order, two acre, one acre, 2100 square feet. But then in the paragraph below that, it reverses that and goes single family one acre, single family two acre, single family 2100. And then looking down below, it then reverses and goes to single family six, single family 12, mobile home six, mobile home 12, mobile home one acre. Can we just format so that it's consistent throughout? Either go from lowest to highest on everything, or highest to lowest on everything? Then on page 435, which is packet page 11, or 18.04, page 11, 1804155. This is a, a policy discussion for us. This is for the AIP district. Right now, it says the AIP district is established to preserve a highly landscaped industrial district with limited types of industrial uses, providing, providing accessory airport and support services. What I would propose to change would be to change providing to including, so that we don't preclude some industrial uses that would be appropriate there, but that don't provide accessory airport services. As an example, in the past, we put Interstate Batteries in the AIP zoning, but basically, we had to say, the only way we could get it approved was by saying that they also make airplane batteries. But it's an appropriate use for that district. So by putting including rather than providing, then that would alleviate that concern.
Yeah, and I
Right, as long as it's appropriate under all the other conditions.
And just
AIP we have, right there.
I, I put it up there. So AIP is adjacent to the airport, basically between the airport and Arrowhead Drive. It, it's an area that, you know, in past zoning, in, in 2001, 2002, the last time there was a Title 18, and they're very involved, it's, it's an area of property owners, they will, they really do want to preserve that area for industrial uses, manufacturing, and uses related to the airport, and, and exclude retail uses and other uses that might invite the public into that area. So, so that is a unique one, and I'm just looking up to make sure we, I believe, manufacturing should be a permitted use there now. So I think that would be consistent with your suggested change.
Right, because there, there's several manufacturers out there now that don't provide airport services. And frankly, in our current environment, where industrial space is at a premium, you know, I don't want to lose a company who, whose process may be appropriate for that zoning district, because we can't put them into a building there that may be the only available building.
Right, and, yeah, historic, that's appropriate. I mean, the, all the uses aren't, aren't required to be related and for the airport and aeronautic uses.
My next comment is on the next page, 436, under 1804175, public neighborhood and public community PC purpose. In that paragraph, there is no PC mentioned, other than in the title. Next comment is on page 437, 1804190, residential districts, density and dimensional standards. So we changed intensity to density in the title, but then we didn't change it in the text underneath. So it should be changed in the text as well, first line. All development in residential districts shall be subject to the density and dimensional standards. I, this is my bible, so all I'm doing is, after 25 years of working with this document, there's things that I would like to be clarified. Under the table, under site development standards, under the third column over where it says maximum density, can we change that to dwelling unit maximum density? Or number of units, number of dwelling units, maximum density, just for clarification? And then, if you look down below, under single family 6,000 and mobile home, 6,000, we need to add under mobile home 6,000, the slash 6,500 square foot corner parcel, to match single family six right above it? Do you see what I'm talking, okay. All right, next page, 438, under multifamily apartment. If you look at the third column over, it says 29 through 36, and then it says 1,200 square feet of land area for a one bedroom. and then it says 1,200 square feet of land area for a one-bedroom. I'm not sure what the 29-36 is supposed to mean, it should be deleted, I believe. Next comments are on page 439, on the table, Site Development Standards, under 18.04.195, Non-Residential Districts. Same comment in the text, we need to change "intensity" to "density." And then going to the table, and I think, Lee, that you and I may have talked about this before, and I've just forgotten, but it doesn't look, when you look in the second column under minimum square foot for these zoning districts, it does not allow for commercial subdivision. Is that because then a commercial subdivision would apply under a PUD?
No, actually, the footnote addresses that, which was added at some point a few years ago to, to address that. So, because the, the minimum lot area includes all common areas, parking landscape, and building areas associated with the par, with the project for the purposes of creating building envelopes or condominium units.
So that's footnote 13?
Yeah. Which, which relates up to the heading minimum, minimum area.
Okay, so if somebody wanted to build an RV, RV storage condo project, and the minimum lot size would be 300 square feet, and that would be allowable?
Well, it's the parent parcel, so it includes all the parent parcel size.
Right, as long as it, yeah, as long as the common area and everything is all included in the calculations.
Correct.
All right, only one more comment, on page 442. And going forward from there, in the use tables, MHP is the fourth column from the end, it's also the last column. But the actual designations under those are different. So just wanted to clarify what that is, and if it's two different zoning districts, then we need to change the initials on one of them, because nobody's going to understand this. So if you can just look at that.
I would, yeah.
And I haven't gotten through the use tables yet, so what I will do is, when I finally finish getting through the use tables, then I'll just set up a meeting with you and Hope and go through my comments off the record. So that was it for me. Anybody else have any final comments, questions? John, go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to listen to what the questions everybody else had. When I read through this, we should talk a little longer than usual, go through. To be fair for the meeting, I didn't see anything specific, but I'm certainly not as learned in this as Brad is. I did have one general question, though, that I wanted to ask. And I really don't even know how to phrase this, but I've been concerned since moving to Carson City and learning more and more, getting on this board, about our situation regarding affordable housing. And several people up here have worked hard on that, and we have the motel situation. Is there anywhere through this rewrite that we can encourage more affordable housing through the zoning that we have? I have the feeling that we, as a city, a community, not by talking about it, but just by time passing and falling into it, that we've relied on the motels too much on the long-term stays to take care of that problem to a degree, which it's only doing inadequately. Is there any way through this rewrite that we can, the zoning, that we can tackle that?
I think I would take that a step further, too, and also add homeless shelters.
Yeah.
You know, things of that nature. Is there an area of town where it could be zoned for affordable or entry-level housing, homeless shelters, things of that? And I know, after meeting with Kenny several times, he's going to tell you, it won't do any good to put a homeless shelter on the periphery of town because they're going to migrate back to town, because that's where the liquor stores are.
And I'd want to add to that, that in the various communities that I've lived in, this is just a huge problem, but it seems to me it's more under the radar here, but just as, just as large. So, everybody's trying to tackle it.
And the other thing that you'll run into is that you're going to be accused of creating blight.
Oh, yeah, it's controversial.
You're picking winners and losers, you're picking an area of town that you're going to then turn into blight. So I don't know that there's an answer, Lee, but.
How much time do you have?
Fix it anyway.
Ask, because I knew we wouldn't go too long.
Yeah, I mean, afford, so affordability of housing, I think, in terms of requiring, I mean, this, this might be the, the tie, like I said, I mean, how much time do you have? I mean, we could have a whole discussion regarding affordable housing and bring it in, or, you know, from inclusionary housing ordinances that require a certain amount of, a certain percentage of residential units to be affordable. In terms of providing zoning for affordable housing, I don't, you, providing a zoning, that's multi, that's just a matter of density. I don't think, you, you don't, you don't really zone for affordable housing. You have other, other requirements or provisions or incentives for it that, that get written in there. You know, I mean, part of the affordable housing is going to be the guest building rental discussion that's, that's coming up with the development standards, if, but not that that's a solution, but it's just one, it is one of those things that might address a little bit of that. You know, I guess I would ask for, you know, direction. I, I'm not, at this point, you know, at this point, didn't anticipate taking on a huge project of figuring out how to address the affordable housing issue and with.
And that's why I asked the question the way I did, because if there's not a way through zoning, I, I understand that, but I was just curious.
I think that you just, when this comes back to the Planning Commission, you just ask them to keep in the back of their mind if they have any thoughts on, potential thoughts on solutions to affordable housing, homeless shelters, things of that nature, and just add it as a discussion item, because I don't think that there's a solution that's going to be readily apparent, but at least it opens it up for discussion. Maybe we'll get lucky.
Lee, sometimes it can be something, something as simple as the developer can have a bonus in the density, or something that, you know, if you do 10% of the housing at such-and-such, you can have some bonus density. And that's all we're saying is to, to have a more global approach to just looking at some of the areas and say, is there any incentives? It still may not get a developer to build some product that they offer below market to let 10 more homeowners in or something, but even talk to them and find out, what, what would be an incentive that would let you sell 10 of those through a HUD project or through, I don't know, just think about it. Think outside the box, we can come up with something.
Maybe it's not a master plan change or a zoning change, but maybe it's an overlay district.
No, I'm aware of the tools that are available to require or encourage affordable housing, but I think it's going to be a policy decision. I mean, even, sure, we can, it's easy to provide, to write in the code, incent, density bonus incentives. When the subdivision comes before the Planning Commission and you, and the neighbors don't want the, you know, I think there's going to be other, other opinions on that. There's certainly a, a way we could do it, but that's going to be a policy decision of whether or not you want to do it. You know, I mean, I think we even have problems, sorry, problems, not the, you know, neighbors have concerns now with the exist, you know, with the density of existing zoning. So, you know, you just have to know you're going to have to resist or hear worries from residents about even more density on those projects. But it's certainly something that we can add.
Well, I, I think your comment is germane, where you said you're familiar with the ways in which you can encourage affordable housing. And I guess what I would say is, you know, at our next strategic planning session, that this be a topic, because it's, it's broader than, you know, and I think as part of that is, is you providing some of those examples, whether, whether it be some kind of tax incentive on, on property taxes, whether it be increase in density, which I think has quite a few drawbacks from a neighborhood perspective, but, you know, I think the idea is integration of affordable housing into, into existing developments, as opposed to the situation where, where Brad mentioned, where you're, you're creating a homeless zoning district, where, you know, you create nothing but, but blight. And so, you know, I think perhaps at a strategic planning session, you can present some of those. I, I look at it like, you know, Brad's discussion about low-impact development. You know, I mean, I, I think this can fit into that same, into that same vein. We just have to find an acceptable method to, to incorporate that into our existing laws, so.
Yeah, I also think that we need to be aware, too, that when we talk about allowing bonus or increased zoning density, then that opens up the discussion for our resource use study. And we've had discussions where, if a developer's going to increase the density over what we've currently allocated through our resource use study, then they're going to be required, or potentially required, to provide additional resources to cover that additional development. Well, then, there goes your affordable housing right out the window, right? So there's a balancing act here where the impacts of that project may counterbalance the affordability of it. And so this is all discussion points, like you said, how much time do we have? So another discussion for another day, but I do think that the discussion should be had. Any other questions, comments?
And as you pointed out, the, this is ongoing, you're going to get, you know, Supervisor Bonkows is going to get comments, and that goes for any, any of you in the public reviewing it. This isn't the last review, continue to go through it, catch things. We'll continue to refine it, have more opportunity for, for public comment through the process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lee. So, this is not an action item, this is just a discussion item. So we will now move on to item 17A, "Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Directives and Recommendations Concerning Carson City Departmental and Staff Functions in Carson City as a Consolidated Municipality in Relation to the Exercise of Emergency Powers Pursuant to NRS Chapters 244 and 414 and CCMC Chapter 6.02 for the Purpose of Ensuring the Health, Safety, and Welfare in Carson City in Response to the Global Coronavirus Pandemic." So we'll give Lee a chance to, to clean up here, and then we'll invite the ladies up to the table for an update.
I got a couple things.
Nancy, you want to start?
Yeah.
Okay.
So at our last meeting, I think it was, Andy Hummel was discussing the, the testing of the wastewater for COVID-19, and I just wanted to let you know that testing is supposed to begin next week. Earlier, we were talking about spending, being able to spend the funding for the PPE and the sanitation supplies. There is, the HEROES Act is still floating around in DC, and that act includes extending the deadline for the expenditures through December 31st of 2021. So I just wanted to, to bring those two things up, and then.
Do you know when, do you know when they're proposing taking action on that?
I don't remember, oh, this week?
You mean, January 31st, the month after the deadline?
I, I believe Stephanie Hicks, Deputy City Manager, I believe they're supposed to wrap it up in the next week or two, because then they're going to take break until after elections. So we're, we're hoping for that information sooner than later. Otherwise, it may not be until after the next year. And I just had one more update I wanted to provide. So as part of our CARES Act funding, you're all aware that there will be reconstruction, reconfiguration of the CR room so that we can seat all of our boards and commissions within social distancing provisions. So this will be our last Board of Supervisors meeting until that, in this room, until that construction is complete. We'll be moving into the theater. All the other boards and commissions beginning October 12th will be moved into the theater. And then construction is going to start immediately. It will start on October 12th as well.
And just as a note, I believe yesterday, the Senate passed the Service Transportation Bill, and the House has already passed it, so my understanding is that that's on its way to the White House for signature. You may remember that we had a item come up at the last meeting where we provided some, basically, bridge funding for a position, because this act had not been passed. So that position will no longer be needed, because the, the funding is in place now, or will be as soon as the White House signs off on it.
So, beginning October 12th, are we changing the agenda style to allow public comment? That's in the theater, or are we staying with the same?
We will be changing the agenda. We're working on exactly what that's going to look like and what our capacity limitations are going to be. Even though the governor has changed gatherings to 250, we, we need to see how we can actually seat people in there and meet social distancing. So we will be working on that with the DA's office so that we can adjust the agenda to reflect how those meetings will run.
Thank you.
Good morning, Nikki Aker, Director, Carson City Health and Human Services. And so this is our, every other week, our meeting, updates on what's going on with COVID. I just want to make a correction to what we talked about last meeting, and thank you, Supervisor Bagwell. I had made the comment that for flu shots, we have a walk-in clinic. Due to COVID, right now, we're scheduling through appointments. And we're doing that so that we can provide a safe environment for our individuals that come in for their flu shot.
You're talking about at the health center?
Yeah, at the health department.
So someone has to call ahead, and that's still the Thursday?
Yes, yes.
And they do great work, and yes, they do give neat mandates.
Yes, we have very cute.
At Scooby Doo or something, anyway, get your flu shot.
Also, since our last meeting, we received two awards from the Nevada Public Health Association. We got one that recognized our epidemiology program as a Program of the Year. And this is for the work that has made a significant contribution to improving public health in the state. And it's for the work being done on COVID. So that's our entire epidemiology program. And then I was given the recognition as a public health hero for the work being done on the pandemic that's made a significant impact on public health in Nevada. But this recognition extends to all employees of the Health Department. Each and every one of them has had something to do in contributing to the response, and we wouldn't be able to accomplish what we do without the dedicated and hard-working employees at the Health Department. I also want to let you know, I'm not sure if any of you have heard, but there is some national coverage saying that we had an individual, not Carson City, but within the Quad County, that had connection to COVID with the Trump rally, and I want to give clarifying information on that. The report said that there was a connection. When we did the investigation, we did not determine that it was a connection. The individual that attended had already contracted the disease or COVID before attending the rally. And to this date, I don't know of any other individuals that have come up with the COVID that we know about. And this was not a Carson City resident, but I just wanted to put that out there. So in case you hear, we've, has received national attention and questions on it, so we've had to respond.
So Nikki, from what I just heard you say, that this person was infected and went to the rally while infected. So as part of your investigation, did you ask that individual if they were wearing a mask at the rally? Or is there a potential for spread because they were at the rally and were not wearing a mask?
So I am not, do you know if they did ask?
Good morning, Jeanne Freeman, for the record. The person attended the rally, they were asymptomatic, they did not have any symptoms. They were tested three days after the rally, and then their result came back. So they were, prior to, they didn't start experiencing symptoms until a couple of days after the rally, and then they were tested. So when we look at what their infectious. So when we look at what their infectious period would have been, we look at the 48 hours prior to their symptoms onset, and that includes that infectious period. So they were at the rally while they were infectious. However, they did not contract it while they were at the rally. They would have contracted it beforehand, and they did not know that they were a carrier of COVID at that point in time because they were not symptomatic at the rally.
But the question was, do you know if a mask was worn by that person?
The person reported that they were wearing a mask during the rally.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So just wanted to get that information out there to you all in case you've heard about that. So since our last meeting, we have had four complaints through our environmental health, and these are our restaurants and food establishments. All four, the complaints were about mask-wearing, and two of those complaints were that the employees were not wearing a mask. One was that the employees and patrons were not wearing a mask, and this is the patrons when they enter the restaurant. So they need to have a mask when they enter. As you're seated and are beginning to eat, then of course you do not need to wear a mask. And then one of the complaints was that the patrons, when they were entering the food establishment or moving about, like going to the restroom or that, that they were not wearing a mask. And through social services, we've worked on two different situations. We're working on one right now where there's an individual that was hospitalized and needs to have a place to self-isolate because at his place of residence, that is not feasible for him to do, and there is a newborn that's involved. So we are collaborating with a place in Reno that did set up housing for these types of situations. It's WellCare, and it's through Washto County is an agreement, Washto, the county itself has an agreement with WellCare. So we're collaborating with them, and this individual will go up there to self-isolate. And the other one was that the individual was upset when she called, and she just needed our case manager to work through. She was upset about some lab and blood work that the doctor was ordering, and our case manager talked her through it. I also want to report that the collaboration with all four counties is going well. We have weekly meetings with what we call the MAC group, the Multi-Agency Collaboration Group, and that is myself and the emergency managers in the four counties. And then Jeanne also provides an update. And Jeanne has scheduled weekly meetings with the schools in the four counties, and that's on Fridays, and that's the ability for individuals at the schools to call in and ask questions and work through some of their challenges that they're facing. So does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
All right. Good morning again. Jeanne Freeman, for the record, to give you a little bit of an update and then tell you some of the other things that have changed in the last couple of weeks regarding our COVID response. Across the Quad County area, there were 145 new cases in the date range of September 13th to September 26th of 2020. That's a 6% decrease from the previous two-week period, which is a nice thing to see. The largest percentage of cases by community were identified in Carson City, Fernley, Yarrington, and Gardinerville. For Carson City specifically, there were 53 new COVID-19 confirmed cases. This is a 17% decrease from the previous two-week period, which we do like to see that number going down. And there were three hospitalizations during that period of time. The greatest contact with or exposure that people had was related to somebody else who was COVID-19 positive. So almost 60% of the cases had reported that they had had contact with somebody else who had also tested positive for COVID-19. We still continue to see a lot of household contacts and family members when they have those gatherings. 60% of our Carson City residents who were identified as positive during that time period identified that they had been employed in that previous month. And when we're looking at that time, 36% still said that they weren't to work while they were symptomatic. That is a slight decrease from the previous two-week period, so we're pleased to see that. We continue to want to have the message of if you're sick, stay home, if you're sick, stay home, if you're sick, stay home, and then wash your hands, wear a face covering, and if you're sick, stay home. So seven cases during the two-week period were enrolled as students. At least one of them was fully online and did not attend class during their infectious period, and we are finding that parents are doing a great job, guardians are doing a great job of if their children are sick, keeping them home and not sending them to school. So that's a very big positive for us as well as the school district. Couple of things that I wanted to let you know of. As you know, the governor made his announcement earlier this week related to gatherings and the changes in size and so forth. We are reviewing what that might entail for us as an agency. We are not to be, we are to review plans, and those plans are to come to us, but we are not responsible for approving them. All approvals of those large gathering plans are to be through one of the different state entities that were identified through the governor's multi-page documents that identify how to look at that, but we are supposed to look at them and review them. So we are starting to look at how that might impact our agency and what the different divisions that will be involved in that process, whether there's food involved or it's just people gathering or what that might entail.
So Jeanne, is the purpose of the local review to pass then recommendations or comments up to the state agency that's giving the actual approval or denial?
So sir, I've definitely spent some time scanning the document. I can't say that I've looked at it in detail at this point in time. That's on my to-do list for this weekend, along with a few other things, to look and see if there's some additional clarification that I need to get from the LEAP committee or from the governor's office as to what the expectation is, if it's more for us as an agency to check a box saying, yes, we've seen it, yes, we've looked through it, or if it's more about us to be giving some sort of recommendation. We do know that the criteria that has been put forth that we can see is that they don't, they want us to confirm that the gathering will not put an additional burden on the health department and so forth. I'm not sure what the criteria are that they want us to look at in relationship to that or how we're going to assess that, but we are going to ask some clarifying questions early next week. I have a few of them, and then we'll talk about that internally and so forth. We may be reaching out through Nancy to all of you for some input on that as well into how that can impact overall our agency and space and people and time and everything else.
I can just add that the latest recommendations that came out, you know, LEAP was put together by NACO, and the latest recommendations that came out didn't get run through LEAP before the governor's office sent them out. So LEAP doesn't really have any direction to provide and didn't have an opportunity to comment on those. So I think you're going to have to ask the state because, yeah, NACO and LEAP were involved.
Thank you for that guidance. The other things that are coming out, the state is continuing to expand upon the type of data and the amount of data that they're requesting related to schools and the COVID cases and connections with schools. And so we are working with our schools and the state to identify what that data is, asking the question why that data, to make sure that we're not adding additional burden onto the schools and those types of things. So we have a variety of points of contact and what that looks like. So we're continuing to have those conversations, and we're also working, I have a meeting next week with the group that is going to be doing the testing for the schools or offering the testing opportunity for school staff. So we're continuing to collaborate across what our typical scope of work is, along with what others are bringing into the community so that we're informed and able to provide support for our agencies. And then above all else, we want you to get your flu shot. And yes, we do have cool Band-Aids. And we have a drive-through flu vaccination and testing event that will be held on Saturday, October 10th, at Carson High School from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And you can come through. We did sort of a practice smaller event earlier this week here in Carson, and it was set forth as a testing event, but we offered flu vaccine, and we had about 80% of the people who came through for a COVID test that agreed to have a flu vaccine. They said, oh, well, this is great. It's convenient. We'll just go ahead and have it. But we did also screen out a couple of people because of their symptoms and did not administer the flu vaccine as we are recommended to not do with the CDC based on symptomology. So we are following all the recommendations and making sure that we're testing that out. And then we're pleased to announce that the efforts that we're doing with our joint events, when we were originally told, no, we can't do that. Now many, many, many counties across the state are actually following suit with that. So once again, Carson City continues to set the standard.
I just want to add a comment that when you go in on the Thursdays to get your flu shot, because I'm assuming everyone will, do you want to describe the new shingle shot and that you're also recommending that for those over 50? Because I just think that's another great service that we're doing because it's not a live vaccine now. So I just think you should kind of put that out there. And yes, your arm might be sore for two or three days, but the pain of shingles is extreme. So maybe you want to give a shout out for a shingle shot, too.
Sure, thank you for that. So I can attest the pain from shingles. I had shingles at the age of 22, and even now still, because back then they didn't have all the antiviral drugs, still occasionally will have residual pain from that. So yes, it's very important to get your shingle shot. We do have it at the health department, and I believe that they decrease that age to 50 that you can get it. So I would encourage everybody to get the shingle shot. Yeah, and there's, it is a two-shot series. Thank you, Supervisor Bagwell. And then I just wanted to also even, I would love to see all of you come through the flu shot or testing event, although Supervisor Bagwell already had her shot. But I would invite you, even if you're not going to go through for testing or a shot, to come and see the operation. We've been practicing this for a very long time, and it can be impressive to see.
Any additional comments or questions?
Yeah, first of all, can I make an appointment right now to be here there next Thursday? I don't want to make.
You need to call the office.
I'll call.
They do not want me making appointments out here.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Secondly, I thank you both for these. And Jeanne, I want to thank you for your answer to my question regarding whether the person was wearing a mask or not. It's not often that a reporter, retired reporter, gets an answer so clear and so precise, which is that person said he or she was wearing a mask. In other words, you don't know for sure, but hopefully. Thank you.
And that just, you know, a comment to that, we, the information that we get is based on what we're told, but that just shows you that the depth of questions that are asked of these individuals and the great job that our investigators and contact tracers are doing.
Last call for questions or comments. Otherwise...
This is Sheri. I have a financial update for you. It's the first meeting of the month. I'd like to hear that.
Go ahead, Sheri.
Thank you. So the C-Tax for the first month in July, don't want anybody to get too excited, but it did go at 12.65%. It's only for the first month, so anything could happen during the year. We budgeted a 12.7% decrease, so we're looking really good as far as C-Taxes go. However, gas taxes are down 12.5% for July. So again, don't get too bummed out. It's only the first month of the year, and things are just starting to reopen in July, so hopefully this number will reflect as we reopen, we'll start working again. That's really all.
Great. Ladies, before you leave, I just wanted to thank you both for your update. Then any questions for Sheri? No? All right. So C-Tax up, gas tax down. I got to say, I'm doing my part with the gas tax.
People camping, I'm surprised because I've seen a ton of trainers.
I don't think I own a car that gets more than 10 miles per gallon.
Well, we've had a break lately. They closed a bunch of the campgrounds.
Yeah.
You know, I've been trying to camp for three or four weeks now, and I finally got out last weekend, so.
Great. All right. Anybody else that has an update under this item, 17? All right, thank you, Sheri. Right, then we are going to move on to item 18, non-action items, future agenda items, status review of projects, internal communications, correspondence. Nancy, Stephanie, anything for us?
I have just kind of a fun thing. So you've probably all noticed that over the last several months, we've had filming of Christmas movies in the downtown and on the west side, and I just wanted to let you know that two of those movies will be on the Lifetime Channel in November. Felice Navidad is going to be on November 21st, and Once Upon a Main Street on November 29th. So tune in to see our great city in film.
Great. Nancy, or sorry, Stephanie?
Yes, thank you. I just had two quick updates. I wanted to let you know and the public know that we are going to be putting out a public input survey next week for our strategic planning. As you are well aware, we kicked that off earlier this year, and it took a little bit of a sidetrack due to COVID and other circumstances. So we want to get the public's input on those objectives that we worked on during our board retreat, and then we'll be bringing that back to the board before the end of the year for discussion. The other item I wanted to bring up, thank you Supervisor Barrett, you actually reminded me of this, has to do with affordable housing. So in December, we hope to bring forward the development agreement that we've been working on in regards to the Budai Way Affordable Housing Project. So that has been moving forward, albeit slowly and again due to COVID circumstances, but we look forward to bringing that forward in December.
Great, thank you. Any member of the board have any comments? Stacy, go ahead.
Couple of items, and I'll share this particular one with, well, Nancy is going to share them both, and she can distribute them, but NACO is holding a couple of workshops. The first one is coming up a week from tomorrow, and it's an oversight of public defenders in Nevada, how the new State Office of Indigent Defense Services is working. And you'll all probably remember that Mayor Bob had a huge hand in that, in the formation of that through AB 81, and he was the president of the Oversight Committee for that. So that's a week from Friday. It's for county elected officials to just give you an overview. And legal staff, I don't know if you have a benefit in that, but I'll share that flyer with Nancy, and she can send it out to staff. And secondarily, NACO is doing their annual conference this year virtually. It is November 17th to 19th. 19th is a board day. It's also the monthly NACO meeting, so I don't think anybody will be at that. But as part of that process, they don't have the agenda out yet, but it is going to be virtual, small fee of $30 to sign up. One of the workshops is going to be a newly elected officials workshop. So I want to make sure that, Nancy, we get that out to our newly elected officials minus our mayor-elect, who I think probably has a handle on that.
Lori, any comments? No? John? No? All right. If there's no other, Jason, you got anything you want to say?
We've got your question. It's been here.
Yeah, it was great to have the B team here today. Thank you.
Just for the record, the...
No, he said it. I wouldn't have said it. He said it.
All right, then we will move on to Agenda Item 19, our final public comment. Desi, is there anybody on the line for public comment?
There is no public comment. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, sir. Then we are on Agenda Item 20 for possible action to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all for participating today.